Okay, we are ready to get started. Today is Monday, July 3rd, 2023. This is our regular meeting. I am calling it to order. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Vice Mayor, our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember House, our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up, we have public participation. This enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Comments relating to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that the item is discussed. If you wish to address council at tonight's meeting, please complete a comment card, which you can find in the back, and submit it to the recording clerk as soon as possible. Your name will be called, as it is your turn to speak. You may address the council up to three times throughout the meeting, including comments made during public participation, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. And there is a timer here. And it doesn't look like we have any public comment, public participation. Okay, moving down to item number five, Proclamations and Recognitions: July Work Aniversaries and Retirement. Hello, Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. Pull up the presentation here so we can get started. So thanks for today. We wanted to celebrate our July anniversaries, since this is our meeting here in July, and then we'll catch you back at the end of August to celebrate those employees who are having their work anniversary that month of August. So we'll start out with our five-year anniversaries. This is Laura. She is one of our Recreation Leader Twos within our Pros Division. We also have Sharice Bretto Aguilar, who's a Housing Services Specialist. She's one of our leads. She would be working within Community Development. Officer Elijah Kim, you might recognize him. He's our Recruiting Officer for the Flagstaff Police Department. He's also celebrating five years. We have Andrew Warner, who is one of our Parks Technicians for our Pros Division. Mathias Ty, one of our Recreation Leader Twos. Got this picture today when I got back from vacation, and I thought, wow, that's a gorgeous view. So appreciate that picture that he shared with us. Ian Anderson is also one of our Parks Technicians, and he is celebrating five years. We also have firefighter Jacob Earl, celebrating five years. And firefighter paramedic Ryan Richards. And firefighter paramedic Sean Conley. This is our first 10-year anniversary employee, George Pryor. He works in streets as an Operations Technician Two. You may see him around a lot during the evening time on a street sweeper. That's something that he's very good at. He works in Public Works. We have Angela Everhart, who's one of our Evidence Technicians for the Flagstaff Police Department, celebrating 10 years. Police Officer Bradley Gilbert, also celebrating 10 years. Our Water Services Manager Erin Young, really enjoyed this picture as well. Jennifer Mickelson is our Housing Analyst. She's also celebrating 10 years, a part of our Community Development Team. Joyce Otero is one of our Recreation Leader Ones. She is celebrating 15 years. Along with Amelia Mason, she's our Library Supervisor. I got to know Amelia quite a bit when she served on our Employee Advisory Committee, so it's great to see her reaching her 15th year with the City of Flagstaff. For 20 years, we have Keith Koshat. He is one of our Fire Captains. As well as Joseph Toth, he is a Fire Captain Paramedic. Matthew Morales, he is one of our Senior Project Managers. He serves in Public Works out at the landfill, also celebrating 20 years. So this is our first 25 years plus. Angel Baca is celebrating his 25th year this month, and this is what his work group had to share about Angel, and he's here with us today, so I'll invite him to come up once I share this information with you. He's been dedicated and continuous service to the City of Flagstaff over these 25 years. He came to Flagstaff as a young teenager and has been a wonderful and versatile coworker over his winding path through the city. Angel started with the city in 1998 as a Material Technician in the Testing and Materials Lab section of the Engineering Division. He's worked his way up through the ranks of the Materials Section to eventually be in charge of running the Materials Lab. In 2005, Angel moved from the Materials Lab to the Inspection side of the section as now an Inspector One. Later, he became the Inspection Supervisor and now leads the Inspection Program as the Construction Manager. Angel is known throughout the city and construction industry as a friendly, fair, and compassionate partner. Contractors for years have asked for Angel to be assigned to their projects, not because he's an easy sign-off, he isn't, but because he'll work with them to solve problems and get their projects successfully completed. He was intricately involved with assuring the quality and compliance of a vast number of projects which have transformed Flagstaff over his tenure with the city. Some of the notable projects in which Angel played an integral part include the Marketplace at the Mall, Fourth Street Overpass, Butler and Ponderosa Parkway Inspection, or Intersection, sorry. And for many years, he was known as the Downtown Inspector overseeing some of the most difficult and complex projects, including Heritage Square and major improvement projects transforming South San Francisco, Beaver, and LaRue Streets. So without further ado, I'd love to invite Angel to come up so that he could say a few words.
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the city and everyone else involved with this award. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work for the City of Flagstaff for the last 25 years. This beautiful city and its surrounding area has provided endless activities for me, myself, my family, and everybody else here involved. Working with the city over the last 25 years has been very satisfying. I've had the pleasure to work with contractors in the field that have mastered the art of building the city. I've worked with a talented group of inspectors, talented group of engineers, both public and private. I've been able to learn a lot through mentoring and watching these fine individuals. Some of the projects have already been mentioned, Fourth Street Overpass. Obviously, we, the Engineering Division coordinated for the international railroad tracks to be relocated, right? So the Engineering Division coordinated all that, built a big bridge. That was just a little two-lane road when we started. Yep, the Mall, Railroad Springs, Pine Canyon, Ponderosa Trails, all of those I was a part of. And a funny note was when Ponderosa Trails started, the lots were $40,000, and we thought that was too much. I wish someone would have told me to buy a couple, huh? Our infrastructure with the county, city, and the country is the most valuable asset any of us will ever have. It is the only thing that separates us from being a third-world country. I believe that citizens of Flagstaff are in good hands with a very capable group with the Engineering Division. We will maintain and preserve it. Thank you, and God bless.
Angel? Angel? Would you introduce your family?
I will, yeah, absolutely. And they surprised me, they came. I told them I was too busy. If they would stand up, please, my wife Rebecca. She's a nurse here in Flagstaff. She's going to be a school nurse this year coming up. Here's my son Angelo, who's a senior at Coconino High School. You'll see him on the football field, baseball field. And my daughter Naomi, who'll be a sophomore at Coconino, and she's a football player also. So we love you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So our next employee that we're recognizing is Trish. She's shown versatility and adaption to meet many challenges over the course of her 29 years. She's working at the Tuba City Public Library. She's committed to her work and is resourceful in carrying out her daily duties, following the protocols as a City of Flagstaff employee. She works as a team player with her colleagues Pearl, Sina, and Delmar at the Tuba City Public Library. Together, they make selection for library materials while weeding outdated and damaged materials. Trish is known to be courteous, patient, and respectful among library patrons and library staff countywide. She resolves matters with a cool and calm demeanor and is always willing to help with tasks that arise, including offering recommendations and implementation of library programs and grant monies. She's an invaluable employee to the Flagstaff City, Coconino County Library System. Congratulations, Trish, on your 29 years. Deputy Chief Mark Wilson, probably is a very familiar face for council. He's celebrating his 31 years. I didn't see him come in, so hopefully he'll pop up if he's here. So 31 years with the City of Flagstaff. He was hired in 1992 as a firefighter and promoted up through the ranks as an engineer, a captain, a battalion chief, a battalion chief of training, and then deputy chief, most recently in 2020. Among his many contributions in his leadership in support services, from staffing to equipping our new and successful care program, to capital planning, implementing performance-based budgeting, he's been key to the Fire Department's success. He recently reorganized the administrative function of the city, as well as Summit Fire and Medical Districts, to gain greater efficiencies and professional development opportunities for the teams. Outside of work, Mark has many roles, that of husband, father, sports coach, church leader, hunter, fisherman, and many more, all of which he does with great pride and commitment. Public service definitely runs in the Wilson blood, so we're blessed to have his brother Dave as a battalion chief and his son Kyle as a new firefighter with the department. The Flagstaff Fire Department is proud of Mark's success and are so very happy to celebrate his 31 years of service with us. Chief Wilson's a critical component of the command team. His devotion to the department, Team Flagstaff, and to the community is evident each and every day as he serves in his role. His creativity, the administrative support services function of the department, has been remarkable and an important part of their success. So I'm going to peek one more time. Okay, I don't see him. Our next July work anniversary is Kathleen Harrison Fazari. She works at our Municipal Court and started there in 1989 as a Court Clerk One. Through the years, she's promoted to Court Clerk Two and ultimately to Deputy Court Administrator in May of 2001. She continues to serve in this capacity where she oversees court services. Kathleen is extremely dependable, highly respected, and is a central member of the Municipal Court. They're so appreciative of Kathleen's hard work and thank her for her dedication and congratulate her, as well as us, on the 34-year work anniversary. I know Kathy's on vacation, so I know she's not with us today, but we'll still give her a round of applause. So this is a retirement slide. We wanted to share with City Council, as well as those of the public who are with us today, that one of our prosecutors, Robert Brown, is going to be retiring on July 7th, so later this week, after 33 years of service with the City of Flagstaff. 19 of those 33 years with the City of Flagstaff. He's currently an Assistant City Attorney in the Prosecution Section. Robert, over his time, has received several distinguishing awards, including the Lifetime Achievement Award in 2019 from the Arizona Prosecuting Attorneys Advisory Council. He was also given a Key to the City on August 10th, 2019, as a result of that recognition, and it was proclaimed as Robert W. Brown Day. That's exciting. In 2021, he was awarded the Ponderosa Award for Leadership by the City Manager. In 2022, Coconino County Victim Witness awarded him the Heart of Gold Award. This was in recognition of his dedication and service to pursuing justice for victims of crime. We congratulate Robert for his long and dedicated career in public service. I believe Robert is also on vacation, but I know Sterling wanted to share a few words with you as well.
I appreciate that. Robert is one that I've known for a long time. In fact, right out of law school, Robert was my first trainer at Navajo County Attorney's Office as a prosecutor. He is one that we are going to miss sorely. I'm wearing black today on purpose in mourning, but I really appreciate the service he has given. Robert has prosecuted over 45,000 cases, misdemeanor cases in his career. He's going to be sorely missed, and we really appreciated his service. I know he's listening, but he was unable to participate today. Just wanted to thank Robert. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time and attention today. We'll see you on August 28th.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving down to item number six, Council Liaison Reports, and I will start to my right with Vice Mayor.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. I've been out. We did have a retreat for the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Partnership on Friday. It was a 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. affair. Great attendance from all of our stakeholders. Thank you, Councilmember Lori Matthews, for taking time to be there as well. It was great to get you up to speed on the history of the CPWAC and do some soul-searching together with you and figure out a path for our future coming up here. Very good time. I also want to thank our City Manager for being in attendance with us the entire time and for being our Government Affairs Liaison. And to our new Deputy City Manager, Joanne, thank you for facilitating the meeting. It was great to have your own brain trust back in the room, given your history with the group over the years and the leadership you brought to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, it was very informative and educational for the retreat that we did on Friday. I really appreciated all the information and the collaboration. It's already been a busy fourth weekend, joining you and Councilmember Sweet on the cleanup of the Rio de Flag, or the Rio de Flag area off Savannah Way. And movie night on Saturday was really fun for all of us to be there and dedicate that night to our citizens, so that's all I have.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. The Housing Commission did not meet in June, so nothing to report there. Coda has continued discussions on their proclamations work, ongoing projects and focus areas, and they shared reports on the successes of Pride in the Pines and the Pride Parade. And just to share this now, it was also just an honor to join the Mayor, Councilmember Sweet, Councilmember Matthews, the City Manager, and others with the Greater Flagstaff Region Fire Crew graduates on Friday. That was an amazing event to watch them celebrated with their friends and families and just the community, recognizing their servant leadership within the community. So that was a great time.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update on Mountain Line. The Federal Transit Administration announced that Mountain Line will receive $16.3 million through the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant to build a new maintenance facility. Very exciting news.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think somebody already mentioned it, the Movies on the Square. All council members were there. That was great. Thank you.
And I would like to mention that the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living is in need of applicants because they have several vacancies, and I know that several other commissions also have vacancies. So I just put that out to the public, that this is a great way to get involved with the city and to help move community priorities forward. So with that, we are going to move on to appointments to our commissions. A is consideration of appointment for the Sustainability Commission. Looks like we have four, we have four appointments, and we will begin with Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a great group of applicants. I think every single one showed a lot of commitment to sustainability and environment and so many good things for our community. It's my honor to nominate Dorcas Na Akushika Korshi, and I apologize if I pronounced any part of that incorrectly. She has a strong academic and professional background in sustainability. She has a professional commitment to sustainability and environmental justice, and she does ongoing work in the community to support and advance sustainability and represent diverse perspectives in and for our community. So I would like to nominate her to a term expiring October 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, and next up, we have Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm going second, so I knew I needed to choose at least two. You definitely took the top one, which is very much an honor. So I'm going to nominate Amy Wolkenwinski as a new applicant for a term expiring in October 2025. Before I let go of the mic, though, I just wanted to say I'm very impressed with this whole slate of applicants. It was really nice to read a full submittal of applications that had detailed responses to the questions that we provide for these commission appointments. That's unusual to see. I wish it wasn't something worth noting. I think it should become more normal, but just really impressed with not only the full slate of filled-out applications, but the information that was provided. I think all of these applicants would eventually serve really great roles on the commission and should keep applying if they don't get in this time around.
Apparently, your microphone was not on. I heard you.
So the application is for Amy Wolkenwinski.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? All right. Yes.
I don't think you stated for what term.
2025.
You did? Okay, I apologize.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes, I have the next appointment, and I just need some clarification. Am I reading this correctly, that the term that I'm appointing expires October 2023?
That is correct.
That is correct, that the term expires. Is this person that I nominate, are they filling someone's term that has left?
Yes, Councilmember Harris, we had three resignations and one term that expired. We were fortunate to have one of the resignations that expired in 2022.
All right, then, at this time, I'm going to nominate Priscilla Botentin, I think is the way you pronounce her last name. I looked at her in particular, just looking at my notes here. She has an excellent background in education. She has an excellent background in education in assessing policy, and I think that as we work with our Sustainability Department and as we look at how we create policies for all and not, you know, make sure that they're not, how do I want to say this? Make sure that the policies are just and fair for everyone as we go through this sustainability. And so with the background that she has in policy development and in socially conscious work and also bringing a different perspective to our commission, I nominate her for term ending October 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank all of the applicants, and it was a pleasure to talk to them on the phone and to read their reason why they wanted to be part of this commission. I did have a one-on-one conversation with Mary Ellen Metzger. Randomly ran into her at Hullablu, and then I talked to her last night, and she's got a passion for this commission, and so I am very pleased to nominate Mary Ellen Metzger to a term expiring October 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So moving on to our Transportation Commission, we have two appointments to terms expiring July 2026 and one appointment to a term for a NATA representative expiring November 2025. And up, we have Vice Mayor first.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make an appointment recommendation for Josh Stone, our NATA representative for November 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? All right, next, Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Jonathan Hanson to a term expiring July of 2026.
Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Harris?
I have the next appointment, and I can't see the term here. 2026, okay, there it is. The person that I would like to nominate for appointment is Robert Kuhn. Robert has a long history in our community. He's also been a member of the FUSD staff. I worked with Robert years ago as the President of the FUSD Board, and he was quite invaluable in regards to our transportation and how we dealt with some of those issues. And so I'd like to nominate Robert Kuhn to that term ending, no, terms expiring July 2026.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you, council. We're down to item number eight. We have a couple of liquor license applications, and we are looking at whether to forward the applications to the state with a recommendation for approval. So it looks like Chief is going to be making the presentations to us?
Mayor?
Yes?
Could we open the public hearing, please, on both of those items?
Okay. All right, on items 8A- On items eight A and B, I am now opening the public hearing. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Chief Dan Musselman here, standing in on these liquor licenses, public hearings. Before you are two licenses. The first is a new application for a Series 11, which is a hotel motel license, and this is a new application for the Americana Motor Hotel located at 2650 East Route 66. The applicants are Zachariah Miller and Bashir Wali, hopefully I said that right. And no derogatory records were located on the applicants or the business, and they have completed the mandatory liquor license training. We were advised the representative of the business would be present for this meeting. And then the second application is for a new Series 12, which is a restaurant license, and that's filed by Troy and Karen Spray, and this is for Altitudes of Flagstaff located at 2 South Beaver Street. Again, no derogatory records were found on the applicants or the business, and they indicated that they would attend the mandatory liquor license prior to today's council date. And they also indicated one of them would be present for today's hearing. So I will stand by for any questions if needed.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Do either of the applicants have anything that they would like to share with us?
Not that they've indicated, Mayor.
All right. So I am going to close the public hearing.
Mayor, sorry, we just need to call for any public comment, if any, before doing that. Sorry.
All right. There's no public comment, right?
No public comment.
All right. So I'm closing the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to forward both applications to the state with a recommendation for approval. Can I do it that way, or do I need to separate them?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Councilmember McCarthy.
I just want to thank the applicant for coming today, in case we did have questions.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That carries. Now we're down to consent items. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So items number A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M. All right. Council, are there any of these items that you would like to pull out to discuss separately? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. That would be A through M.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving down to routine items. Item 10A, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-15, an ordinance levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Flagstaff, subject to taxation a certain sum. I always regret when I start reading these because they end up being long. Upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending 30th day of June 2024. And this will be our second time hearing this matter. Do you have any kind of presentation, Rick?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director, there is no presentation today. This is the final step in our budget adoptions with the second read of the property tax ordinance. I'm here if you have any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? I don't see any public comment. Okay. I will take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we read ordinance number 2023-15 by title only for the final time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purposes of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness and providing funds for the general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2024.
And again, to the public, if they would like to see the presentation on this, was this two weeks ago?
June 20th.
June 20th. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-15.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving down to item number 10B, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-20. And this is amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately 1.17 acres of real property located at 1899 South Woodlands Village Boulevard from the light industrial open zone with the resource protection overlay to the highway commercial zone with the resource protection overlay. And we had a presentation on this, was it also on June 20th? Okay. So if the public would like to go and watch that, do I have a motion?
I'll move to read ordinance number 2023-20 by title only for the final time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately 1.17 acres of real property generally located at 1899 South Woodlands Village Boulevard from the light industrial open LI-O zone with a resource protection overlay RPO to the highway commercial HC zone with a resource protection overlay RPO, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt 2023-20 ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving down to item number 10C, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2023-38 and ordinance number 2023-16. This is a resolution of Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled 2023 Short Term Rental Code and an ordinance of the City Council amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations by adopting by reference the certain document entitled 2023 Short Term Rental Code. And so staff doesn't have a presentation on this? I know that, oh, oh, great.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Anya Wendell, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I have a camera here. So this is, this is the comment, this is the second reading today on a draft ordinance to regulate short-term rentals in the city of Flagstaff. A short-term rental is a residential dwelling unit that's rented for less than 30 days, and we currently require registration of those units, and now we're going to be requiring licensing them to the extent we can license them under state law. So at our last meeting, there were some public comments. We've tried to address them, and so in the ordinance you see tonight, we have made a few revisions, and I'll just call them out quickly. The neighborhood notice that's sent out to neighbors that provides the owner information and the emergency contact information, that will not be required to be submitted at time. The owner of the short-term rental applies for a license. It will be required to be submitted after or before the owner offers the unit up for rent. So that's consistent with the strict state laws. It's kind of more work administratively, but on the other hand, it does give the owner the flexibility of getting the license and then deciding, you know, six months later, okay, I'm going to start renting these. Now I'll send out my notice to all the neighbors. So I think that's a fine change. We also have in our ordinance that we were going to be requesting a time of license application that the owner disclose whether or not the unit is owner occupied. There was a comment that kind of questioned that, and we've always felt that that would be voluntary. We do want that information. It's really helpful to know who is operating in our community and how many of these units are locally owned. So we'll still be asking for it, but we won't deny a license based on the failure to provide that information. We also, in response to a council member's concern about the rising costs of managing these units and growing numbers of them, that we add an annual increase to the license fee, and our Management Services Director, Rick Tatter, was able to justify that. And so there will be an annual increase in the fee of $5 starting November 1st, 2024, which will be the one-year anniversary of the effective date of this ordinance. And finally, as to prohibited uses of a short-term rental, we just had originally just tracked the language of the state law, but as our Police Chief Dan Musselman pointed out, that that language could be clarified. So we did clarify now that liquor control violations and producing pornography are prohibited uses. So those changes were made. There was also request from the mayor that we look at the draft county ordinance to see what possible changes we might want to make to our own draft as a result, you know, just to see if there were some good ideas we wanted to take into account. Now, I want to say that the draft county ordinance, it's my understanding that it won't be considered by the Board of Supervisors until August, so, or mid-August, so it's possible that there will be changes to that draft as it goes along. I did want to just touch on some of the primary differences, though, just so the council is aware of those. One of those is that instead of, so the city issues a license, and our Finance Management Services Department is going to be issuing the license. In contrast, at the county, the Planning Department there will be issuing the permit for their short-term rental. So that's just a little bit of an administrative difference. The county, the city license fee will be $175, the county's permit fee will be $250. The city is not requiring, at this time, insurance, additional insurance for the short-term rental. There was an assumption that whoever owned the unit would have insurance on their property. The county will be requiring evidence of $500,000 in liability insurance for the short-term One of the items that the county has focused on is seeking to require that any short-term rental located in a single-family residential zone comply with the zoning requirement that it be used for a family, which is generally related or affiliated persons or up to five unrelated persons living together as a housekeeping unit. The city of Flagstaff, short-term rental ordinance does require that the owner comply with all applicable laws, so zoning does apply. Our zoning is a little bit different. It's the same kind of definition of the family where it can be related persons or similar people with affiliations, close affiliations, or up to eight unrelated persons living together as a single housekeeping unit. In practice, that definition of family is difficult to enforce, and staff really felt that this was something that we would struggle with trying to enforce. If we receive a complaint about what's going on in a short-term rental and it's clear violation of our zoning, then we'll definitely respond to it, but that was kind of the attitude. And if there were any questions council had about that, I'm hoping Dan Volk, our Community Development Director, is on the line so he could answer those. I'll just pause for a minute.
And I'd like to point out that county and city staff sat down to compare both short-term rental ordinances, just to make sure that we're complimentary and that we are utilizing best ideas from both. And Dan, I don't know whether Dan's on the line and if he has anything to add.
Right here. I have a question.
Are there any questions? Anya, did you have anything else?
I think those were the primary issues. Their enforcement process, they have kind of a two-tier enforcement process. I think we are giving our short-term rental owners the opportunity for a hearing. I'm not so sure the county will call for a hearing in all instances if the owner objects to whatever citation it's received, but I'm comfortable with the process that we've established. I think it will work well. And that's it. That's the wrap-up.
Council, any questions? All right. And just a note to the public again, this was receipt, we had a presentation on June 20th, and the presentation is also attached to this agenda item on our online agenda, if you would like to look at it. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 2023-38.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So we have adopted that. Now I need a motion to read.
I move to read ordinance number 2023-16 by title only for the final time.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2023 Short Term Rental Code, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-16.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That carries. Moving down to 10D, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Lone Tree Overpass Project.
Mayor, I don't believe we have a formal presentation on this as it is a second read and adoption.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, considering that we've discussed this before, I move that we read ordinance 2023-14 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Thank you for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff authorizing the acquisition of real property for the Lone Tree Overpass Project, providing for delegation of authorities, subsequent council approvals, severability, and establishing an effective date.
I move that we adopt said ordinance. I move that we adopt said ordinance.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries. Moving down to item 10E, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, abandoning approximately 5,140 square feet of public right-of-way connecting to the north side of Route 66. And this has also been discussed previously. This is our final read. Do I have a motion or any questions or discussion?
Mayor, I'll move to read ordinance number 2023-17 by title only for the final time.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, city clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, abandoning an approximately 5,140 square feet of public right-of-way connecting to the north side of West Route 66, providing for sale of such property, delegation of authority, recording, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt said ordinance.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving down to 10F, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-19, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1 through 18 Administrative Departments, to rename the City Clerk Division to the Communication and Civic Engagement Division. And we also had a presentation on this previously. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to read ordinance number 2023-19 by title only for the final time.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18 Administrative Departments, to rename the City Clerk Division to the Communication and Civic Engagement Division, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-19.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that carries. I heard that. Councilmember McCarthy. Didn't you say oi?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so. I guess that still counts.
Well, that was intended to mean, yes.
Okay, 10G, consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2023-18, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title I Administrative, Chapter 1-16 City Elections, to provide for the manner of conducting elections for initiative and referendum measures, provide, I'll, I'll leave the rest of that for the city clerk. Do I have a motion to read?
Mayor, I'll move to read ordinance number 2023-18 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City clerk?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title I Administrative, Chapter 1-16 City Elections, to provide for the manner of conducting elections, elections for initiative and referendum measures, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt ordinance 20, ordinance number 2023-18.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries. Moving down to 10H, consideration and approval of contract, professional services contract with Shepherd Westnitzer and Ardua Company in the amount of 499,520 for inspection services of the Inter Basin Waterline Restoration Project.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. David Peterson, capital improvement project manager. Stacy's putting up a poster that was attached to the staff summary as well, so you can pull it up digitally or you can refer to it here as we go throughout the presentation. I was going to use this opportunity to do a little update. We were before you on the 2nd of May. We've had a busy month, or month or two, I guess. The focus of the, tonight is the contractual agreement with SWI for inspection services, but whenever we're in front of you, we like to give a little update as well. So I won't take long, I promise, but it's good information. Really briefly, just want to go over the project stakeholders again. So the Forest Service has been really instrumental in making sure that we have the permitting and the clearance to get up there with our crews. Couldn't do it without them and their cooperation. It is on Forest Service lands. So it's a nice agreements back and forth, and we've done a lot with various departments with the Forest Service. I really appreciate them. As I mentioned last time, in May, we are funded up to, not to exceed, a $16.1 million funding from the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management, or DFFM. Hunter Contracting is our contractor, contractor, contractor for construction, and Jacobs Engineering is the design engineer. And then optimistically, I put Shepherd Westnitzer on this list of stakeholders. I hope the meeting goes well, so I'm including them on the group. And then the city staff as well. We have a myriad of different departments that are involved here with the team as well. And I also wanted to point out, it's on this picture here, the Waterline Road, if you haven't been up there, has a very tight tunnel from Burrows with sections of water pipe back in the early 1900s that was cut through a volcanic dike up there. It's very tricky to get equipment through there, so our contractor actually miraculously got a D7 and a front loader through that tunnel without having any damage to the tunnel or the road. They did have to deflate some tires and take off some pieces of equipment to get it through, but that saves having to drive around a good 10 or 12 miles. So kudos to Hunter Contracting. I try to bring something exciting every time we're in front of you. Last time I brought the funding request of the 16.1 million. Today, I'm happy to say that our decision memo was issued last Thursday, signed by the forest supervisor. It is a monumental achievement. It gives us the authorization to go in there and do our restoration construction, do everything that we need to in the context of the project, our staging areas, really extensive cultural, environmental analysis, tribal relations. It's a very complex document, living document that has, I can't even name all the consultants and the agencies that go forth in making that possible. So I just want to say thank you to the Forest Service staff, our consultants, our city team, in making that available now, so that we can get up there now, we can complete any facet of construction, not just the maintenance construction that we were doing under our existing road use permit or RUP. What have we been up to in the last two months? We actually were able to get up on May 23rd and 24th, the end of May, we were able to get up there as a whole team to visit all the 45 sites. So the first day we went up and we did, went in this blue area here, the Schultz Creek watershed, all the way up from below to about Point 26. The second day, we partnered with our city wildland fire crews, as well as Forest Service crews, to shuttle people and crew members up to Point A, our high point on the project, and we drove down to I, where we commenced a seven-mile downhill journey with the 18 of us. So it was a very productive day, fruitful day, and amazingly enough, everything that we've done to date prior to that was collected by drones. So all the design quantities was all done by drone footage and drone video. So we were actually able at that point to begin quantifying quantities needed for construction and visit the site, looking at how to move various debris and other items out of the way and get our water flowing back to the community. As mentioned before, that road use permit allows us to do that grading and road maintenance, maintain our water line. So the construction that we have done to date is through that mechanism, which now we can move into that decision memo authorization to do restoration construction. Also in there, actually the day after we were up there, we had a LiDAR and aerial acquisition that involved a lot of ground truthing with Arizona surveying that was up there, setting 24 ground control points, several of them in two to three feet of snow, so that, that was not an easy feat, and a lot of them didn't have access. So it was a lot of hiking on their part. A lot of work with the decision memo as well, as you can imagine with that, all that feedback that goes into such a large document. We got to make sure that what we're getting approved is what we need. There's a lot of GIS that goes back and forth with that, a lot of consultant work that goes back and forth with that. Enviro Systems worked on the cultural, environmental clearances on that, flagging historic and cultural sensitive areas, and then prioritization of the design work, so that we can really prioritize what areas we need to work on first to get the water flowing back to our community. So then after that, we can go back and armor these sites as we go into monsoon season, so we don't lose the pipe again. And much more exciting than probably text on a slide, I have some pictures from our field day. As mentioned, we have actually three points. I mentioned before, we had two points broken in the water line. We found a third that we can address. It's actually Point 29A, which I'll show on the next slide. But there are also places on the pipeline that are compromised, so the water still flows here. This picture in the upper left, the bedding and shading material is gone. The water is flowing through there. It's not leaking, but it is a compromised pipe. So if we have increased flooding or additional flooding, that can compromise that pipe, so we need to get up there and secure that pipe as well. This is that canyon, if you recall from my presentation last time, I was standing next to that 25-foot gorge. This is filled in with about 15 to 25 feet of drifted snow during our end-of-May field trip. So this one and this bottom right one, which is up at Point A, just to help give a little context of our environmental constraints when we're doing construction up there, we'll have to have a winter shutdown, and depending on what the season is like, we might not be able to get into, until well into the spring. So we're going to try to do higher elevation work this fall and then work downhill, so that when we start up in the spring, we can start at lower elevations and work uphill. This is Stacy BK trying to put in her effort to push that, remember that SUV-sized rock I showed you last time? And she swears that there was movement on it. We couldn't verify that, but it's now out of the way, and we can actually drive through that point. So thank you, Stacy.
If anyone could move a rock?
That's true. Well said. This picture on the bottom left, as beautiful it is to hike up there with creeks flowing around you, that is our two to four million gallons a day leaking down that should be coming to our community. So we are working hard to make sure that we can get that back to our North Filtration Plant and back into our system for use, because that is not well water, that is just spring and snow meltwater coming down for virtually free. Fair. Yeah.
Yeah, just a question, how, how much trouble would we be in if, if we didn't have such a good snow pack this year and with Lake Mary? If that wasn't also true, that we're flush with water down here, how, how big of a problem would this have been?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
We're fortunate to have redundant water supplies, even without the Inter Basin source, spring or well water, even without Upper Lake Mary, we still have about 13 million in groundwater supplies alone, so we still have enough to meet daily demand off of groundwater wells.
Thank you, Brian. And that was Brian Hudson, our water production manager, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think in, normally can be up to 20% of water supply in the summer that would come from Inter Basin. This picture here is just showing some of the debris that's deposited on the road and what some, many of the crossings look like. If they don't have structural damage or incising canyons, this is actually a site that had previous improvements post Schultz wildfire back in 2010. And again, just some field crews walking down that day, four of the 18 of us walking down. So getting back to the foci of the presentation is the inspection services. So this is a, this is an aspect that we would normally carry in-house in, in, in engineering inspection, so led by Angel here in, in-house, but because the project involves so much time, probably two full-time inspectors, and it takes a day to get up there, do your work, and come back, we don't have the capacity on the engineering team to pull one or two inspectors away to do this project. So by contracting this service out, it allows us to make sure that we're meeting engineering standards and we're installing materials that are approved. So that's the reason we're bringing this inspection services contract forward. It is for just under half a million dollars. It's going to go through the end of November next year, so that's a, you know, 516 calendar, calendar days. And again, just reviewing the plans, working with the engineer, the specifications called out by the design engineer, and then providing those daily, weekly inspections, noting all construction activity. It's not an easy place to get into. Sometimes you have to go from Locket Meadow, sometimes you have to go from Schultz Pass Road. So we need to make sure that if we have multiple crews working, we can have multiple inspectors working, and we need that flexibility to make sure that we have the inspectors where we need them, when we need them. And then again, like I mentioned before, the compliance and installation of construction materials, so making sure the ductile iron pipe makes, meets spec, the bedding material meets specs, our gabion baskets and our retaining material, you know, follows the intent of the design engineer. And I also wanted to mention that one of the head, the lead inspectors with Shepherd Westnitzer has had 47 years of construction inspection experience, 20 of which were here at the city of Flagstaff, running our inspection, engineering services inspection. So need to go full circle with our, our own staff from back in the day. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain any comments.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right, it doesn't look like we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for the city clerk. Can we have a motion to approve one and two, or do they need to be separate?
The two items that are listed under recommended action can be combined together in one motion.
Can I have a motion?
All right. Mayor, I move that we approve item 10H.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, and have a wonderful break. I'll be here for when you come back. The 28th, we'll see you again. We will. We have to work and make sure that the scene is safe, especially now going into monsoon season, and once it's secured, we'd be happy to take you out there and tour you around.
Okay, moving down to item 10I, consideration and approval of contract, a professional services contract with DOW-L, Dowell LLC, in an amount not to exceed 523,993 for a land availability and suitability analysis, and a development code and process analysis.
Good evening, mayor and council. Michelle McNulty, Planning Director with the city of Flagstaff. And with me is Nicole Antonopoulos, the Sustainability Director. Not with us is Sarah Dar, Housing Director, who was on a much-needed and deserved European vacation, but she has been an integral part of this as well. So this is a project that we've alluded to multiple times in different council meetings, and so really excited to be here today. This is a multi-pronged initiative to address critical long-term planning and resiliency needs. It's a partnership both through funding and, and actual work between planning, housing, and sustainability, but it's providing a much-needed base for high-level coordination between a lot of development, or a lot of city divisions and sections, engineering, including development engineering, transportation engineering, fire, building safety, economic vitality, water services, mountain lion, and others. This is a very exciting project. It will conduct an in-depth analysis of what land is available in Flagstaff and what are development potentials and barriers. It's going to also provide an in-depth development code and process analysis through the lens of city council commitments to address housing and climate. And overall, it's an analysis of what's working and what's not. And most exciting is we're actually going to provide some analysis to test the theory against already-approved projects, to really truth our findings. It's a pretty robust scope, as you have detailed in your packet, but a high-level overview is, there's going to be a lot of project meetings and coordination. As I mentioned, there's a lot of people involved and a lot of input that we need, and a lot of ideas that we need to share and foster. There will also be public, public outreach that will include focus groups with developers, design community, and other interested groups that work within our development review process and within our codes. We have advisory committee meetings- our development review process and within our codes. We have advisory committee meetings, identified Housing Commission, Transportation, and Sustainability Commissions, but we know that there are other commissions that we'll likely be giving updates to, open space, diversity awareness, just to name a few. And then we'll be giving routine check-ins to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council. So the scope of work includes two distinct projects, a land availability and suitability analysis, which we affectionately call the LASS, and then the code and process analysis. While these are two separate projects, they will be done concurrently. So it's not like one has to finish before the next can start. They'll be going kind of side by side and then converge when we give an update to Counsel. So for the land availability suitability study, it's a good, I'm sure people are wondering why are we doing this? Well, we have limited land left to develop and many needs. So while we have a housing emergency, we also need to make sure that we're protecting our commercial zone lands as well as our industrial zone lands for our economic vitality of the community. It also will provide context for recommending right-sized code amendments. Gives us an opportunity to really understand what are the true barriers so that we're making appropriate code changes to address those and not just using generic planning theory that maybe is sterile for any community. So we want to make sure we get it right for Flagstaff. This will include just a land inventory and analysis. Through that, we're hoping to identify approximately 50 opportunity sites that we can really focus in and do a high-level, in-depth suitability analysis, including field visits to evaluate the site constraints, infrastructure gap analysis, as well as looking at regional cost reduction strategies. And the end product for this will be a vacant residential land report. And I do want to clarify that we're not just talking about vacant lands, but also underdeveloped lands or lands that might be primed for infill. The second part is the code and process analysis. It won't go through all of the codes that are going to be evaluated, but you can see it's a long list. These are, this is a comprehensive list of all the different codes that do go into a development project, as well as process analysis through how we are reviewing those things, through our inter-division staff review or IDS review, looking at our individual planning entitlement reviews, so concept plans, site plans, conditional use permits, and zoning map amendment process, and then other processes that are identified along the way that seem important, that might be having an impact on our development. So kind of high-level deliverables, there'll be a public outreach plan that really identifies who we're reaching out to and when, the vacant residential land and site suitability report, a code diagnosis. And on the next page, the next slide, I'll show a schedule. But this is where we feel like we'll be coming back to you guys with the most comprehensive update of the information that we found and kind of that list of code changes that we want to get in front of you to start prioritizing as we continue work on this project. And then later, we'll come back with the full code recommendations and impact report. So this is the schedule that was included in your packets. And so you can see, first quarter of 2024 is when we want to be back here with that, kind of the code diagnosis and that recommendation of what we found today and where we're headed with our priority So if we get this project done, then what? So why are we doing all of this? So a lot of this is being done to both inform the regional plan update, as well as the regional plan update will be informing this process. We will use this to develop a work program based on prioritized recommended code changes. Staff will actually work to draft the recommended code changes and conduct community outreach to get community input. And also, we'll be drafting updated development review processes as recommended and also vetted through our stakeholder groups. But we're also doing some things in the interim to bridge that gap between the time that it's going to take to do this very complicated, multi-pronged project. We'll continue to do routine updates. So the building code, for instance, is scheduled to be updated in 2024. We'll also do minor code updates as applicable. There may be things in the engineering standards or even the zoning code that we know can be done independent of the rest of this study. And sorry, other engineering standards would include looking at level of service and vehicle miles traveled calculator, as well as regional transportation safety plan and adopting Vision Zero policy. So there's a lot to be said about this project. It's really exciting. I'm going to leave you with that. But myself and Nicole are here for any questions that you have. And I would like to note that the consultant team is also online to make themselves available if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. You know I'm excited about this.
Yes.
Counsel, questions, comments? Counsel Member Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. So can you just clarify the statement about informing and being informed with the regional plan? Because clearly, this will have a large impact on our finalizing our regional plan to make sure that one isn't going in one direction and one's not going in another. So can you just spend just another minute or so explaining how that's going to work?
Yeah. And so I also want to note that Cascadia Partners, who is actually leading the scenario planning as part of the regional plan update, is a subconsultant to Dow on this project. And that's one way that we're ensuring that we're going to have that continued coordination, because we do have at least the same firm working on both projects. So for instance, as we develop our land availability and inventory study, that will be informing the regional plan on policies. So for instance, we are already kind of seeing that we really don't have a lot of opportunity for land conversion. So the commercial land we have and the industrial land we have, we need those for our jobs and other things. So we're not really looking at rezoning those. So we have to be really efficient in our, how we use our residential. So it could inform the regional plan by setting policies about rezoning certain land use types to ensure that we have the correct availability for what we need for all of our needs. And then other things that could happen, I don't want to presuppose anything in the plan, so I want to be kind of generic, but the policies in the plan may have like recommendations for where we want to see certain types of development. So that could translate into code that would help facilitate that.
And then just the follow-up. We had a presentation last week, I believe it was, with Terry from the DBA about, you know, the work that they did in re-envisioning downtown, you know, for higher density and stuff like that. So is that also being coordinated so that we're all on the same boat?
Yeah. So that's more being coordinated with the regional plan, especially with the scenario planning. So yeah, we are making sure. And so through virtue of that, it will be informing the greater study.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Member House.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Thanks.
This is really exciting. And I just wanted to note that this is an example of where it would be really helpful to see the, in our agenda, we have the notes on how it connects to, you know, the carbon neutrality plan and the regional plan and those things. This would have been a really good opportunity to present how it connects to the housing plan as well, because I know that something that is of high interest to the community is seeing how we're advancing that and moving forward with that plan. And this is kind of a small, big one in there, is looking at the zoning and figuring out how we can responsibly develop or redevelop into the future. So that's just a note from me, is that that's a really good opportunity for us to show where and how we're moving that forward with something like this. So very exciting. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out, Counsel Member House. Counsel Member Harris.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It's nice to see departments working together. I just have, well, a couple of questions. First of all, back to the 50 sites that will be selected, and how are those going to be selected?
So that's going to be through, we haven't, we're still going to work with the consultant team to develop the approach, but ideally, it's going to be through identifying what does it mean to be kind of ripe for infill. So developing parameters that would indicate that an area is going to be seeing redevelopment or infill development, as well as looking at our big opportunity sites of vacant land. And then looking at what are the constraints? Do we, evaluating other plans or maybe some projects that are in the hopper to identify, okay, would that further preclude development there, or would that make it more positioned for development? And then the consultant team will come out and do field reconnaissance to really understand what's happening on the ground, not just relying on GIS data and plans, looking at where we see capital projects that are being prioritized, a lot of different things that will really help us identify those 50 sites. It could also be that we look at like a grouping of smaller parcels that could potentially be like re-subdivided to create a larger parcel and opportunities like that.
And so can we assume, you know what happens when we assume, but can we assume that all of our land and all of our property is going to be looked at? And all the property that the city already owns, is what I'm asking.
City-owned property.
So all city-owned property is going to be looked at, and all city-owned property is going to be thrown in the mix. Is that correct?
That's 100% correct.
Okay, all right. And the last question is, well, it's not a question, it's a comment. I just want us to be real mindful and throw everything in the equation when we start looking at where we're going to infill, and specifically, what neighborhoods are we going to infill in, and how we're going to do that. And are all neighborhoods going to be on the same level in terms of if they can stand infill, that those are going to be on the table also? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I didn't speak to it, but you'll see it identified in the actual scope of work. But another thing that this consultant team is going to be looking at is the impacts of dislocation or gentrification of neighborhoods as well, because we don't want to have an adverse impact on our vulnerable populations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Member Sweet.
Thank you. I just wanted to express appreciation. I think this is a huge step in working towards our goals for the city, and I appreciate the work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I just, I know staff put a bunch into this to make sure it got to you before the break. I wanted to give a shout out also to Christina Rubelkava, Senior Assistant City Attorney, who was involved in reviewing the contract too. I know it was a heavy lift for all of them, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo that appreciation.
Counsel, any additional questions, comments? All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to award the professional services contract with Dow LLC and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to item number 11A, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2023-40, a resolution designating its chief financial officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2324 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General and establishing an effective date.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Counsel. This is pretty much related to a state statute that we're required to designate a chief financial officer for the City of Flagstaff. This resolution designates myself, as it has for the last several years, and we're just looking for your approval of this so we can send it on to the state. I'm here for any questions.
I thought that that might be longer, and I would have time to chew half of this character.
And so what this really means?
Counsel Member McCarthy.
I move to read Resolution 2023-40 by title only.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2023-2024 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-40.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving down, 11B, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2023-27, a resolution approving the designation of an applicant agent and authorizing the agent to apply for and sign on behalf of the City of Flagstaff for the receipt of funds from the Arizona Department of Emergency Management and Military Affairs Assistance Programs. I, make sure you're not chewing. You're done. So hi, Mayor and Counsel, Stacy Breckenegs, Grants, Contracts, Emergency Management Director. And this really is a simple authorization. I'm currently the applicant agent with the Department of Emergency Management and Military Affairs, and it's required when we have, a disaster occurs and we have a declaration and we do public assistance, we get our funding reimbursed through our, for our events. But this really is confirming me as the applicant agent, but adding an alternate applicant agent, which is our emergency manager, Daniel Kelly, which is right behind me, so that now the state actually wants us to have two applicant agents, a prime and an alternate. So that's what this does, and they require it to be their form, the mayor sign, and it by resolution be adopted. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any questions? Any motions?
Mayor, I'll move to read Resolution Number 2023-27 by title only.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the designation of an applicant's authorized representative and alternate authorized representative form submission to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-27.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving down, 11C, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2023-42, a resolution of the City Council amending the procurement code manual, Articles 1 through 7, and establishing an effective date. We also had a presentation on this, if anyone from the public would like to go back and reference that. Hello, Patrick.
Hello. Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable Chair Members, Patrick Brown, your purchasing director. I'm here to help answer any questions if you have them. Happy to do the presentation again if you so desire.
Counsel, anyone want to see Patrick's presentation again?
No.
It was very good, though.
Thanks.
No offense.
None taken.
But could you remind me when you expect to see the other revisions coming forward relating to our climate goals and our housing goals?
Absolutely, Mayor. We anticipate bringing those back before Counsel the first quarter of calendar year 2024. We've got a little bit of work to do before we get there.
Great. Thank you. All right, Counsel. No questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Well, I enthusiastically move that we read Resolution 2023-42 by title only.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, City Clerk?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the procurement code manual, Articles 1 through 7, and establishing an effective date.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
I move that we adopt said ordinance, said resolution.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, we are moving down to 11D, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2023-41. This is a resolution adopting amendments to the Active Transportation Master Plan. And we are fortunate enough to have Martin Ence here to talk to us today.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, members of the council. My name is Martin Ence, I'm the multimodal transportation planner for the city. These are a series of minor amendments to the Active Transportation Master Plan, or ATMP. We are making these amendments in support of a planned grant application for Safe Streets for All. So I'll take a little time and describe the amendments to you and then take a little bit more time and describe what the application looks like and what the project looks like. So first, on the ATMP, it was originally adopted in November of 2022. It essentially serves as a guide for enhancing walking and biking in the city of Flagstaff. And let's see if we can get this to work. Bear with me. It's a little bit clunky, but it'll work. So in general terms, the proposed amendments to the ATMP fall into two categories. One, it references safety as one of the factors that we consider in prioritizing projects and considering programs and strategies in the ATMP. And second, it adds a short section that describes what we call complete streets conversions. It identifies four potential complete streets conversion and includes Butler Avenue as one of those. More specifically, these are lists of the proposed amendments. We're updating the pedestrian and crash data. Previously, we had referenced the years 2009 to 2018. That data's been updated to reference 2017 to 2021. That's the most recent five years that we have. Second, we add a safety target, which includes serious injury crashes to fatal crashes. So the new target becomes, the city sets a goal of having zero fatalities and zero serious injury pedestrian and bicycle crashes within five years. That's one of the crucial things for the grant application. Third, as I mentioned, we reference safety and crash data when we prioritize projects. Fourth, there's a link to the ATMP online map included in the document. And then fifth, as I described briefly, we're adding a section to the infrastructure recommendations that describe complete streets conversions. Just a bit more on complete streets and the projects that we identified. Typically, these are corridors where more than one type of infrastructure is needed, so there might be missing sidewalks, bikeway planned, footstraw planned, and the need for crossings. So they're all kind of grouped into a single corridor. There also are opportunities for other enhancements, so we can do ADA improvements, other crossing and pedestrian improvements, including some aesthetic ones. Also, these corridors tend to be high use in terms of ped bike and also have a lot of crashes, so they're identified as part of our high crash or high injury network. And then finally, most of these corridors are proximate to some of our target neighborhoods for low-income populations. And here is a map of the four corridors that are identified in the revised ATMP. They include toward the right upper section of the map, Cedar Avenue on the north side of Sunnyside, Fourth Street forming the eastern boundary of the Sunnyside neighborhood, and then more centrally, the Milton Avenue corridor and Butler through South Side. So that's a summary of the proposed changes to the ATMP. And now I'll take just a moment and describe the grant project that we have. So the project, the grant is called Safe Streets for All. It's a federal program. It's intended to provide, to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries, especially for vulnerable users, pedestrians and bicyclists. There are two types of grants. One is a planning grant, the second is an implementation grant. Assuming that you have a plan that meets their criteria, you can apply for implementation. Implementation is infrastructure, other construction. We believe that the ATMP and Metro Plans Regional Safety Plan meet their criteria for a qualifying plan, so we're moving ahead to implementation and applying for a grant for construction. And I'll go back for a moment and just say that with the changes that were suggested to the ATMP, that strengthens our hand and gives us kind of a leg up in qualifying for the plan that's required. Implementation grants can be between two and a half million dollars and 25 million dollars, so it's not a small grant program. And in addition to the emphasis on pedestrian and bicycle travel, there's a focus on equity as well. So the project that we have in mind for this grant is a conversion of Butler Avenue from Milton to Sawmill. That's just under a mile in length. The main component would replace the current barriers, which are a pilot program, with something more permanent, raising the bike lanes to the level of the curb. Three protected intersections as part of this project at Beaver, San Francisco, and Sawmill, they would be in conjunction with a protected intersection that will be constructed at Lone Tree as part of the Lone Tree Overpass project. One, new enhanced crossing at O'Leary along Butler, and one upgraded, the one that's existing now at Humphreys, will include some minor enhancements. There's an opportunity along much of the corridor to provide wider sidewalks and even a parkway where it's missing, so it enhances pedestrian travel as well. And then finally, we're looking at different options for speed management, given that speed is a significant consideration for safety, especially for bicycles and pedestrians, but really for all road users. And based on our current cost estimate, which is preliminary, we're looking at a total project cost of 12 million dollars, of which 9.6 would be federally funded. And just to give you a better idea of where those improvements would go, here's a map of the corridor showing the length from Milton on the left to Sawmill on the right. The orange is the whole length of the corridor where we would raise the bike lanes. The three blue squares are protected intersections that would be built as part of the project and the gray square is the one that would be built as part of the Lone Tree Overpass. Finally, the two red dots are the locations of our enhanced crossings. So you can see, as you kind of look down the corridor, we're providing places to cross that kind of evenly spaced or nicely spaced along the corridor to encourage more pedestrian and bike travel and really kind of undo the barrier effect that Butler can have in some places on the neighborhood. Here's a couple of images that show essentially a before and after configuration. The one on the top is the bike lanes and what Butler looked like before the pilot barrier project. And you can see there are four and a half foot bike lanes adjacent to lanes of travel on the street. And the bottom image shows an after configuration. So we've taken that bike lane, moved it off the street, raised it to the level of the sidewalk, and provided a parkway in between travel lanes and the bike lanes slash sidewalk. Now, I should point out that the bottom is kind of an idealized, we think that we have the right-of-way or the room for that improvement for most of the corridor, but there will be points where we have less room than that and we'll have to do away with the parkway and in a couple of cases, we may have to narrow down some of the dimensions. But at this point, we think that the treatment generally can be applied consistently for the length of the corridor. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or to listen to your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And this has been vetted by both the Bicycle Advisory Committee and the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, correct?
Yes, it has, Mayor.
Thank you. Both voted, I should mention at the recent meetings, to express their support for both the project and the grant application. Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Martin, for the presentation. It's exciting to see things penciled out in these areas that we've talked about for a long time. A month or so ago, we talked about the planning to apply for a grant for the elevated bike and ped pass. Have we started the designing of that already, anticipating either the grant or some other type of funding? Has that started the ball rolling?
Yes and no, Councilmember. We have done some preliminary work in-house on the design to get the information we need together for the grant. We do have 15% budgeted for an outside consultant to begin the design work between now and when we hear about the grant. And we have contacted a consultant, but not yet begun that part of the work. The grant is due a week from today. Once we're through that part of it, I think we'll have a little bit more time to focus on getting the design going.
And when is the announcement expected?
The end of December.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Harris?
Okay, so I'm going to go into the weeds a little bit. So I had a chance to really look at the speed signs on Butler, and they are 30 and 35 until you get a little bit further out. So my mistake when I thought it was 40 the whole way. But the one concern that I really have is the O'Leary and Butler crossing. Every day, I come out of O'Leary onto Butler, and you know, that's the street where you can only turn right onto Butler, you're not supposed to come in from the other way. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So I have to pull pretty much all the way out in order to see the cars coming from around the curb. And I'm assuming that you all have much more expertise in these matters than I do, and you figured out how it's going to be possible for someone coming at 40 miles an hour to see somebody in the street that's crossing before they hit them.
Yes, part of the preliminary work in design of those crossings is looking at sight distance to make sure that pedestrians who are crossing or bicyclists have adequate sight lines to vehicles that are approaching. And the speed of vehicles does make a difference in how much sight distance there is. The speed limit along there, I believe, is 35. Of course, if we're able to slow vehicle speeds, then that helps our design for sight distance and makes the crossing a little bit safer. Some of that work has been started on that crossing in particular, but I don't know that we've gotten to the point of looking at some of those details.
I've seen people try and cross there, and it's a pretty wide street. And so my concern is that if you're standing on the O'Leary, you know, street corner in Butler, and you're trying to go across to the south side of the street, that it's going to take people a little bit, and especially in that community, you do have more older people. And we also have more people who are transient to our community and they're not, maybe not aware of how fast that traffic is coming. And so I'm concerned about how we make sure that people don't get hit trying to cross that street if we put a crossing there. Does that make sense?
It doesn't, and thank you for your comments. I will, since you started us in the weeds, I'll go a little bit deeper. One of the enhancements that we're making at the existing crossing on Humphreys is to have a mast arm over the street with the rapid flashing beacon attached to the mast arm. That puts it in a better place for visibility. It's both higher and visible from further down the street. That's kind of, it's our new standard. It's how we would do them now. When we originally built that Humphreys crossing, we did not have that standard. So we're going to go back and redo that one to have that more visible crossing. And we'll build the one at O'Leary in the same way, which will help its visibility for vehicles traveling down the street from a longer distance.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions, comments, a motion?
Mayor, I will move to read Resolution Number 2023-41 by title only.
I'll second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Martin. And do we have a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I'll need to read first.
I was, oh, I was on such a good streak, too. Yes, please.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting amendments to the Active Transportation Master Plan. I move to adopt.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now we are moving down items E and F, so they will be considered separately, but we're taking public comment on both of them at the same time. Thank you. And we have some public comment and we have online public comment. So E and E1, this is consideration of prior council action, consideration and approval of contract. This is the cooperative purchase contract with General Acrylics in the total amount of $920,642.42 to design and build eight pickleball courts and overlay existing tennis and basketball courts at Bushmaster Park. And is there any type of a presentation from staff?
No, Mayor, there is no formal presentation for item E.
Okay, then I am going to move straight into public comment. Right, City Attorney?
That sounds great, Mayor. Thank you.
I'm going to start with Connie Folsom.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for agreeing to reconsider.
Can anyone hear me?
Thank you for agreeing to reconsider your decision of May 16th regarding pickleball courts in Bushmaster Park. We have done everything we can think of to impart to you that pickleball does not belong in Bushmaster Park. We hope you have come to understand that the noise from pickleball is not like that of any other park noise, such as tennis, basketball, children in the playgrounds, dogs in the dog park, or people just having fun in the park. It has been scientifically proven that the frequency of pickleball hits is the same as that of garbage trucks backing up. According to pickleball noise expert Bob Unitec, it creates vibrations in a range that can be extremely annoying to humans. I can attest to that. People all over the country are saying no to pickleball within hearing distance of their homes, and cities and HOAs are heeding their call by prohibiting the building of pickleball courts within 600 feet of the nearest home. Again, I remind you, there is no place in Bushmaster Park that meets that criteria. Just because a location is shovel-ready does not make it an appropriate place to build pickleball courts. If you have read any of our emails, if you have listened to us during public speaking time, or read the report that we recently sent to each of you, if you have casually heard news reports about pickleball, then you know that the noise of 16 pickleball courts in Bushmaster Park would be a complete catastrophe. You can choose to wait until funds are available to build courts in an appropriate location, one that would not diminish the quality of life for people who live within hearing distance of it, or you can decide that because Bushmaster is shovel-ready, it does not matter how you affect the lives of those who live nearby. Please direct your efforts towards finding a suitable location for the sport, one that could expand as needs grow and that would not make the lives of those who live near and adjacent to the park miserable. I do believe that you all know by now that Bushmaster Park is not an acceptable location for pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing that I forgot to say when we started is that we are looking forward to a very respectful conversation today, so if the audience would refrain from clapping or booing or any sign of your feelings about what the speaker is saying, that will help us to have that respectful conversation. So next, we have Steve Walter.
If you've been out and about recently, you may have stumbled across a pickleball game or two. The game takes place on a small court with a paddle and a plastic ball. It's kind of somewhere in between tennis and ping pong. And the popularity of the sport has grown and grown. There's just one problem, the noise. Pickleball is like the worst of both worlds, you know? It's loud and it's high pitched. That's Mark Dent. He's a journalist who reported on pickleball's noise problem for the hust- He's a journalist who reported on pickleball's noise problem for the Hustle newsletter. He started looking into this when he saw lawsuits in local publications. Over the last several months, I just kept seeing them kind of pop up. And all of these lawsuits, of course, were largely over pickleball being too noisy. So I'm like, how can like pickleball be less noisy? Like, is anybody working on it? Enter Bob Unitich. Before he was a pickleball lover, he was an engineer. Then when it comes to the noise problem, he gets it.
You can't take pop, pop, pop for 12 hours a day, every day, and remain sane.
No, you can't. And so he began to dig into it.
Pickleball sound exists right in that most sensitive range. An interesting thing I learned along the way is that garbage truck backup beepers are right in the same pitch of pickleball. Why did they pick that sound for beepers? Because it's the most annoying frequency.
Unitich and a couple other engineers started measuring the sounds from a pickleball game and thinking of solutions.
We built a tall chamber. We found dropping a ball, if there was no wind, no air, enabled you to get a very predictable speed. And so a ball hitting one paddle will give you a different sound than a ball hitting a different paddle.
So the material of the equipment helps and sound barriers, but that's expensive. The best way to mitigate noise is to fix it before the problem starts and build courts that are far enough away from people. Here's Mark Dent again. It's kind of like having to invest more money on the front end and planning to avoid this potential major disruption and lawsuit, conceivably at least, on the back end. Unitich worries the noise problem will slow the growth of his favorite sport. He's hoping the solutions will help so he can keep playing.
I was just playing with some older friends and two young high school girls, I guess, were playing. We decided to go over and ask them to play because we think it's so fun to have two young people who think they're going to beat us find that they can't beat us.
That was Bob Unitich and Mark Dent.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Audria Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to thank Jennifer Katra for stepping up at last week's meeting to talk about the FPA's petition. We support this effort 100%. I'd also like to respond again to a comment made three weeks ago by a pickleball player, "To calm down and focus, this is just pickleball." Well, I won't calm down, and I am focused on the giant tsunami wave about to swallow Flagstaff. We need to prepare and fortify our city and keep our citizens safe and sound and sane. A reminder again, number of players in 2021 was 4.8 million. July 1, 2023, 48.3 million players. As we continue our discussion today, we, the residents, are asking, at the very least, for neighborhood impact studies, and we are prepared to submit a new petition. Asking so, we gathered 60 signatures just this weekend. Or you can simply read the studies already done and save a lot of time and expense. Cities across the nation have heard the clamor, done the work, and created ordinances and measures and standards before building courts. While the number of players grow each day, equally the number, the problems escalate. Equally, keeping up are nightly news stations, magazines, newspapers, social media, all accounting the growing problems nationwide and beyond. The latest is from the New York Times, June 30, called "Shattered Nerves: Sleepless Nights, Pickleball Noise Is Driving Everyone Nuts." Here are some excerpts. "Sports can produce all kinds of unpleasant noises, but the most grating and disruptive sound in the entire athletic ecosystem right now may be the staccato pop, pop, pop emanating from America's rapidly multiplying pickleball courts. It's like having a pistol range in your backyard. It's a torture technique. Pickleball is the topic of the year, according to the vice chair of at NoiseCon 2023, the annual conference for American noise control professionals. Amy Hagan continues to describe Bushmaster as the only city property to build courts because it is shovel-ready. This term is so 2021, it is outdated, very poor reasoning. This is a whole new 12-headed beast that no one saw coming. This issue demands mindful planning. However, will there ever be enough public funds to support the need for of this sport? But pickleball players are organized, and we know some are wealthy. One billionaire is converting Arizona Mills into a pickleball year-round Mecca. If you all just even asked your members for a dollar, that's $48.3 million. And with the growth rate you enjoy like no other in the stock market, you could even help subsidize your local city parks and rec department build all of your underfunded desires at Thorpe Park or any other appropriate site." I'll start here. I got a fiver in this pickle jar. I believe Amy is doing her job and sticking to original tasks with very limited funds, but she does not make the call. You, as elected officials, is the wide overseeing body that determines if we make, if we need to stop and look at the updated current science and data and plan for a better future for parks and rec.
Thank you, Audria. Kathleen Day.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. I respectfully also ask that you pause on Bushmaster project and engage in that larger study to make sure that we don't have an adverse effect on vulnerable populations. And I agree with those who live surrounding Bushmaster. I live in the neighborhood, so the noise is not directly affecting me, but I'm sure I would be going crazy, too. But I wanted to address some other concerns. I'm in the park a couple times a day, and I don't think I'm alone in feeling like it's a takeaway from people that live in that neighborhood, particularly like the silo homes or, I'm out of breath, or those in that neighborhood that are lower economic than many of our other neighborhoods in Flagstaff. And so it's a takeaway, I feel, as far as access to the facilities, to parking, to this casual, laid-back use of the park. And so I'm there a lot, and one of the things I notice is how people just use the ramadas. And I don't think, and I think it'd be interesting to look, if the ramadas are reserved on a regular basis? Or is it the pattern of that park that people just kind of spontaneously, let's go to the park and have dinner, let's have our family to dinner? And on a recent Saturday afternoon, even the South Ramada had four separate families using it, kids running in the grass, playing. There were three sets of pickleball games going, and it looked like truly there was only about 12 parking spots available. And so, and I don't mean, I'm not trying to demean pickleball players, I've played myself, but I think when you set up a sports league, you'd have a very aggressive reserving of all those ramadas that would then make them inaccessible to the way that they've been used over the years of just gathering families. And I think many of the people that use them are people that don't have those amenities in the apartment complexes in and around. I think we have a responsibility as a community to care for those children of silo homes in the neighborhood, many who can't afford being in structured leagues or camps or or clubs. And so to preserve the park in that way, that people still have access. Recently, there were kids playing on the basketball courts, and people put the nets right between two pickup games of people playing, just kind of overtaking the park. And I think because they're not part of the neighborhood, they don't have that consideration. And I wonder if that's why we're seeing the increase in graffiti in the park, of people wanting to say, you know, I'm here, I belong, and feeling that tension all around about a displacement of the residents of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Peering.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dagan and councilmembers. My neighbors and I appreciate this opportunity to discuss some of the reasons that another park, such as Thorpe, would be a much better home for dedicated pickleball courts than Bushmaster Park. Recent reporting in outlets such as the New York Times, CNN Business, and NPR all demonstrate that pickleball's noise problem exists both in terms of how loud it is, measuring 70 dB-A, and its specific pitch and frequency around 1.2 kilohertz. As you heard in that NPR article, so I won't rehearse it, that's the exact same pitch as the backup beepers on garbage trucks. And it was chosen, that pitch, for the garbage trucks because it is literally scientifically the most annoying frequency. That piece from NPR refers to the work of Bob Unitich, a retired engineer and pickleball enthusiast, who is researching legitimate solutions to the noise problem. And as you heard, those solutions include very expensive acoustical barriers. However, the most straightforward and cost-effective solution is to build courts as far away from residents as possible. To remind you what Dent said, it's kind of like having to invest more money on the front end and planning to avoid potential major disruption and lawsuits on the back end. This suggestion, to build pickleball courts as far as possible from residents, is precisely why Bushmaster Park is an especially poor choice. The only other parks I can think of that would be equally bad are Spring Park or the Tree Park. For example, in the noise study conducted by MD Acoustics in July 22, 2022, and presented to council on October 18, the acoustical experts recommended limiting noise in Flagstaff's residential areas to 50 to 55 dB-A, 55 to 60 in mixed use, 65 in commercial, and 75 in industrial areas. Building pickleball courts, which incontrovertibly produces a 70 dB-A in a residential area, grossly exceeds the very standards recommended to city council by the acoustical experts it commissioned. Finally, during the October 18, 2022 council meeting, then-community member Deb Harris made a characteristically insightful comment, saying, "When you live in a community, you become a community member, and you work with your community members to make sure that the quality of life is good for as many people as you possibly can." I agree entirely. Adjusting the plan to build pickleball courts in Thorpe rather than Bushmaster Park is just the sort of compromise that permits our pickleball-loving neighbors to have a dedicated space to enjoy their sport while respecting the rights of residents contiguous with Bushmaster Park. So in keeping with councilmembers' suggestion, it arrives at the best outcome for the greatest number in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Malice.
Thank you for your time. I've lived in Flagstaff since 1981, have owned my home in Lower Greenlaw, which is one block south of Bushmaster Park, for close to 30 years. I have worked in the sales and supply side of the construction trade in Flagstaff since 1987. The numbers in the proposal from General Acrylics do not make sense to me, especially when you consider that concrete is up 14% since January, steel and copper have increased 13% over the last two quarters, and labor has increased 5% over last year. It seems this project is already over budget without any dirt being moved. I would also like to know if flood abatement has been addressed. Bushmaster is in close proximity to two separate fire scars. Our home has come to very close to flooding three times over the last two years. More concrete slabs will only make matters worse, especially for homes on the southwest corner of the park. Finally, I would like to address the inadequate community outreach. The award letter for this project is dated December of 2020, yet the 78 mailers to my neighborhood were not sent until spring of this year. The city states the lack of complaints received at that point makes Bushmaster ideal, and also says the project will alleviate tensions between different sports at the park. So here we are today, the residents of Greenlaw trying to convince the Flagstaff City Council and a private nonprofit 501(c)(4) organization with a board of directors who require dues for membership, that Bushmaster Park is a terrible choice for pickleball expansion. Apparently, there are plenty of complaints and tension for all involved.
Thank you. Malia Rodriguez.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Malia, and I am an immediate resident of Bushmaster Park, where my property opens, the back of my property opens from locket, so I live on locket, directly across from the skate park. And as a directly impacted resident, I feel the notification was very inadequate on this project. I received a flyer in April of this year, something, I think it was around April, indicating the project was going on, and never indicated that there was any recourse we as citizens could have against this project. I will say, for the last couple years living at Bushmaster, I have lived with ping, 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 and did not realize that this was gonna happen, like I said, until the spring. I did not realize there was any recourse, so I do appreciate the opportunity to speak on this subject. I walk or run, and my children play at Bushmaster daily. And I can speak uniquely to this ping, 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 okay? I have put kids to bed to this, with pickleballers often playing past 10:00 PM, which is when park closes. And still, ping, 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 ping. It's very disrespectful to the residents of Greenlaw and the people that border the park. There is no, like, there's no respectfulness to the community at all brought by the pickleballers there at Bushmaster Park. I know that you guys have heard of other residents' concerns about the parking, or this is a fad sport. I would also say, like, just another note on that respectfulness, what I saw, another resident who said that they saw a basketball game that was literally a basketball game on one side, a basketball game on the other side, and pickleballers were in the middle. And the teens and the young children there have been incredibly respectful to the pickleballers. When the pickleballers have come into that basketball court and said, hey, can I use that space? They have let them do that many, many times. So many times, these teens and these young children are not able to use that basketball court, and instead are doing things that they should not be. So these children are being displaced, and I have witnessed it with my own eyes on multiple occasions, just out of respect. Many of these pickleballers are older people, and these teens and these children are being respectful to them and allowing them to use this space. And that is not fair to the neighborhood children and to the citizens that live in that area and to the people who come there to play. So I really appreciate you guys reconsidering the placement of these pickleball courts at Bushmaster Park.
Thank you. Amanda Allen.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Amanda Allen. I've been playing pickleball for three years, and I'm a mediocre player. I don't say that for sympathy, but it's just a fact. In most of the games that I play, I'm the weakest player of the four. But the reason that people will play with me is because, over the last three years, we have developed a community, a community of friends that's felt to me like family. I play with Lynn, our fearless leader, who always pumps me up when I make a good play and has countless barbecues. I play with Brooks, who's so kind and encouraging, and he fixed my bike when it was having issues. I play with Mike, who's retired from the military and a great guy. I play with CJ, who texted us all a picture of his son the day that his son was born. He helps Sierra and David with a water issue that they had in their house. I've played with Kiki and James, who are just passing through flag but decided to stay for a few months largely because of the pickleball community. I play with Dawson, who's retired from the military also and brings a bucket of balls for impromptu lessons with anyone. I play with Amy, who organized a birthday dinner for me. I play with Heidi, who brought dinner to Brooks when he had COVID. I play with Blanche, who offered to watch my dog over Christmas when I couldn't find anybody else. I play with Kathy, who brought me dinner when I had COVID. I've gotten smoked by David and his high school son Samuel. I play with Vanessa and Gary and their four boys. I play with Mitch and his boyfriend Antonio. I play with Alicia and Damian and their son Payson. I play with Brian, who lives in Cornville, and Rich, who lives in Tuba City. They both travel to Flagstaff every weekend just to play with us. I play with Seth, who joins us when he doesn't have an NAU class in the evening. But this list isn't even half of the friends that I've made playing pickleball, and everyone else here has their own similar stories. I just listed a few to show you how this decision is so much more than pickleball. It's so much more than just a game. Don't get me wrong, the game is awesome, but we have become a family. Pickleball is about a community in Flagstaff that is welcoming of all ages, races, gender, and ability levels. We're just asking for a little space in a public park for our growing family to thrive. Pickleball got me off the couch during COVID. It helps get me out of funk when I'm having a bad day. It helps get me outside with friends when I would have had another night alone. But most importantly, it's how I felt like I belong in the community of Flagstaff. I've lived in Flag for 13 years, and only recently have I felt like I belong to the community because of these amazing people that I've met. So your choice tonight is to protect those few Flagstaff residents that have lived that- So your choice tonight is to protect those few Flagstaff residents that have lived by a public park and have heard the faint sound for the past three years. Or you can make a choice to build community, to give all people a place where they can belong and find joy, laughter, and friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have Jennifer Katra, and you have people here with you. If all of those people would stand and stay standing, and you can join her down here if you'd like, or you can just let me count you.
There are 10 for me and 10 for Lynn, so they may not know which card they're on.
Okay, so, so when we get to Lynn... Don't stand up. Okay. Okay, so Jennifer, I'm going to give you 15 minutes.
Great. That's great. I don't need anywhere near 15 minutes. I didn't think I was going to get it. So I thought about things a lot, and I thought, there's really not that much more for us to tell you. You've heard everything that there is to say pro and con about this. You heard over three hours in May. I will read you the, what I did write, because I'm a little confused about where we are in the agenda, and then I will take some time, because what I think you've heard in the last few minutes, to my opinion, is a lot of it's misleading, some of it's gross exaggeration. I didn't hear any outright lies tonight, but we've heard those in the past. So let me start with this. Good afternoon, mayor and council. This agenda item is a little complicated, so please excuse my confusion. I believe the action item before you at the moment is to decide whether or not to reconsider your action of May 16th to approve the improvements at the sports courts at Buschmaster Park. If that's where we are, I would strongly encourage you to stand by your original decision and not vote to reconsider. Your approval at that time was conditional upon addressing the concerns of the nearby homeowners by moving the courts as far north as possible and cutting as few trees as possible. To my understanding, Director Hagan has done exactly that. She has come up with a modified design that is a win, 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 win. It's a win for basketball, with two like-new resurfaced courts. It's a win for pickleball, with eight dedicated courts. It's a real win for tennis, with two brand-new tennis courts receiving the new low-profile lighting. And a definite win for the southern neighbors, as the majority of the pickleball play will be moved much farther north than expected. All of that was accomplished by you, with your direction that you gave to Director Hagan at the time of the original 6-1 approval. To my understanding, nothing more needs to be done. So I encourage you to let this item pass. Do not vote to reconsider your decision of May 16th, and it's done. Of course, it's your prerogative to reconsider. I honestly suspect the outcome will be the same, as this modification really does address all of the concerns expressed by the council at that time. You're really not going to hear that much from pickleball, the pickleball community tonight. Please do not mistake that for a lack of interest or support. Can everyone, everyone who's here in favor of pickleball, please stand up? It's a holiday weekend. This is a fraction of the people who wanted to be here. People are at the lake or a variety of places, but some of us are here. Instead of talking a lot, we feel the time for talking is done. We feel it's time for action. We trust you to make the best decision for the community. Thank you. Now that said, I've still got 10 minutes, and I don't have anything really prepared. But I would like to address some of the exaggeration. I, I think that you can sense it. I, I know there's a lot of emotion, and these people are fighting really hard not to have Buschmaster be the pace for pickleball courts. The pickleball community really, honestly, doesn't care where we get pickleball courts. The problem is, there isn't any other place. We have provided you a petition that'll come up a little bit later, that if you are really looking for another location, you could put them at Thorpe Park Annex. Of course, the last city council already programmed that space, that parcel, and moved pickleball courts off of there. Fortunately, all that's in that northwest corner is a parking lot. So as I've emailed to you, it would be a good location. It's large enough for a 16-court complex, and that is what is needed. As you probably understand, pickleball is not the only sport in this city. Parks and Rec has a lot of other sports they would like to address, and this funding, which Parks and Rec and the pickleball community worked so hard for and finally got last year, is pretty much the only funding that pickleball is going to get for, I don't know how long, but let's say 10 years. So whatever decision it is that you make tonight, it really needs to last through that period of time, or we're going to be right back here having what someone last time called the pickleball wars all over again. So that northwest corner, it's big enough for 16 courts. It is completely flat. It is already deforested. Not a single tree would need to be cut. All that helps to minimize construction costs. It is much farther away from homes. The single closest home is 300 feet, which is twice the distance from Buschmaster. And there are other homes that are farther away, and they're also buffered by the existing buildings on the property. In addition to all that, it would take us out of Buschmaster Park. The courts would still be dual-stripe, so it's still an option, but you wouldn't have the numbers of people at Buschmaster that you have now. At the same time, it would also provide some flexibility during that 10 years. If the 16 courts at Thorpe Park Annex were to become overpopulated in that time, it would leave Buschmaster Park as some overflow. There would be no priority for pickleball at the courts at Buschmaster, but it would be an option for people to play, so it gives some flexibility and good use of your funds. Of course, everything comes with a drawback. The previous council decided not to put that there. The ICCC, whose name I can't quite get correct, I think it's the Indigenous Community Cultural Center people, had expressed some concern about having pickleball next to them, and that I believe is why the pickleball courts were moved. That said, it is a regional park. It's much farther from homes. It is a location. But you'd have to be really committed to that, because I think that would need to be decided tonight. I don't think we could go to where, okay, we're going to say no to Buschmaster, and now we're going to go to Thorpe Park, and now we're going to have some community engagement, and we're going to drag this out for another year, and then we're going to decide, no, the original council was right, and we're not going to put them at Thorpe Park Annex, so now we're going to go back to Buschmaster. Pickleball has been waiting a long time. It's been over four years that just the Flagstaff Pickleball Association was organized, but people tried for years before that. It was part of the FOSPER Initiative, if you remember that, back in 2017, 2018. And these people are right. It's growing tremendously. There, there are so many new people. Every time I go out to the courts, there are new people, and I ask some of them, like, you know, "When did you start playing?". A lot of them are new, others have come from other communities, or their friends in Phoenix or Prescott or wherever are teaching them. It's being taught in schools now. And to address some of the concerns, Buschmaster Park is a great location. In the past, there's been some suggestion that we make indoor courts. Well, that's a whole different thing. First of all, that's dramatically more expensive, and it changes it from an activity that a kid and his friends can go do after school for free in the park to something that requires being paid, memberships, all that kind of stuff. So what we're looking for is a solution that is open to everybody. I think that Buschmaster is probably the best location, even though I'd love 16 dedicated courts at Thorpe Park Annex. Amy Hagan chose that location for a reason. You know, her first loyalty is to the city of Flagstaff. She's demonstrated that to me very clearly over the last four and a half years. I've worked with her very closely. I sat down with the Coconino County parcel viewer. I personally asked her about every single piece of city-owned property. I think she got very annoyed, but she was kind enough to answer and provide reasons about why things couldn't go certain places. And she knows. So you're welcome to ask her. But, so, Buschmaster is the location. Let's address. In some of these past comments from previous weeks, there was concern that pickleball would take over the park. Buschmaster is a 20-acre park. The courts that Amy told you she wants to put there are half an acre. That's 1/40 of the park. There are 300 trees approximately in Buschmaster Park, according to the person who went and counted them for me. We're talking about cutting maybe 10, so 3% approximately. The noise, I think you understand, is exaggerated. There is a sound of pickleball. It's been measured, Lynn might talk to you about that some more, at Buschmaster, not from videos from the internet, not indoor pickleball, not immediately next to people, but at different distances from the actual Buschmaster courts, where it's actually playing. And many of you have been there yourself. Driving in, or walking in from the parking lots, you really can barely hear it. You can hear it at other places in the park, but you can stand right in the middle of four courts playing pickleball and have a conversation at normal level with no difficulty hearing anything. Wasn't going to say this, but I'm just going to say it. We've heard about how, you know, pickleball is going to ruin property values and how it's so unfair to people who, you know, have lived there for 30 years. Well, at least one of the people who spoke to you tonight bought her house a year, two years ago. I think it was in 2022. Yes, she had been a longtime resident of the neighborhood and had moved away in the past, and then moved back knowing that pickleball was there. So buyer beware. I just, and that's just to say, there has been exaggeration. We need to find where the truth lies. You need to take the emotion out of it. And to that, I would point you to Director Hagan. Her loyalty isn't to pickleball or the neighborhood. Her loyalty is to the city of Flagstaff. The proposal that was brought to you after many years of working on it was something that she has, I think, thought out over the four years. The city invested in eight dual-stripe pickleball courts in 2019. That's a significant investment. The Parks and Rec understands that courts need to be built in clusters. So instead of building a 16-court complex at Thorpe Park Annex, she thought the most economical solution for the city and the one that benefited the most sports is the one that she proposed to you. Let's build eight dedicated courts, get a 16-court complex, resurface both the tennis and basketball courts, and benefit multiple sports. So I just think that you listen to your experts on all other topics. When they come to you about, you know, water issues, flood mitigation, there are clearly people who are upset about the flood mitigation out of Schultz Creek. I live out there, and I know some of the property owners who are very unhappy with the solution. And that doesn't mean you stop the solution, and it doesn't mean you micromanage the size of the culvert or this or that. You trust your experts to, with the general concept of, we need flood mitigation, and then you need to figure out how to do it, you need to figure out how to work with the neighbors. And so it's the same thing here. Trust Amy Hagan. She's going to, I believe, present to you another solution if you go there. I would hope that you would just stand by your original decision from May 16th. It already included all the stipulations you need. You need to trust Amy, that she is meeting all of those stipulations. I am very certain that the proposal that she will show you at some point will meet the satisfaction of all six of you that voted to approve the courts. It could save a lot of time and angst and energy if we stopped the agenda item here and just did not reconsider, moved forward, and made a 16th decision. If not, we'll just talk some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dawson Henderson.
Thank you. This is my first time. I've missed all, I've missed all the fireworks, so I'm glad I'm having a chance to say something to y'all. First of all, big thank yous. I moved to Flagstaff, I'm Dawson Henderson. I moved to Flagstaff in 1978, lived here ever since, been involved with gym and sound issues of other sorts in the Grand Canyon, and, but played tennis and racket sports all my life. Six years ago, some friends took me over to the Aquaplex and said, "Hey, Dawson, I think you're going to enjoy this funny game." And sure enough, pickleball in the Aquaplex, six years ago, that was the first time I'd heard of it, you know? And ever since then, we've been trying to find places to play outdoors. We were chalking courts, getting run off of this and that, bringing our own nets. And three, four years ago, the council decided that Buschmaster was going to be our place, and they lined the tennis courts for us, and they lined the basketball courts, and we kind of negotiated how we would share the courts with the basketballers and the tennis ballers. And it was a big, long process. You guys bought us 10 little nets we had to put together by hand, and we formed a group of pickleball hosts, and we would show up in the mornings mostly, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it got to be maybe Tuesday, Thursday. We'd show up. You guys built us a big box no one could break into, would just get covered in graffiti every now and then, but we'd unlock that box every morning, we'd bring our own little blower, they'd blow off the courts, we'd set up nets, and sure enough, maybe a dozen people might show up. Anyway, you know, for the last three years, it's been like that. Last year, you guys bought us these beautiful pro-level, you know, six beautiful nets that we could leave out, and this would roll back and forth, so now we didn't need our hosts to open and close boxes. Anyone in the public could come over, push a net over on the tennis ball court or on the basketball court, they could play anytime they wanted to. We had the existing light systems. We had all the same rules that you guys had for those guys playing, you know, at night with the lights. You know, we, you know, we all kind of worked it out. We had a few little interactions with tennis players. I had sometimes negotiate with Kiki with the basketball players, could we share the courts, could we not, blah, blah, blah? But, you know, over the last three years, you know, we've, you know, we've really enjoyed your support of being able to play pickleball at Buschmaster. And, and also for the last three or four years, we've been trying, trying to come up with, yeah, we need pickleball in Flagstaff. We had no pickleball courts, public pickleball courts. Thanks to the Phoenix Suns, we got two, you know, you know, in the middle of Flagstaff, but we, but we would really love to have courts where we don't have to share them with tennis balls, you know, or basketballers. You know, we're, we're a big group, we're a family, like you've heard, where I'm kind of the typical 71-year-old gray-haired dude, but I think our age group is getting younger and younger. Now we're seeing the grandkids are out there, the, you know, the kids. Anyway, I hope you do, you know, support your original decision, please.
Okay, so next up, we have Lynn Walsh. And will everyone who is here with you, Lynn, stand up? There's a few different ones. Okay. All right, so Lynn, you can have up to 15 minutes as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Hopefully, I won't take that much of your time as well. It's not the goal tonight. I think we, again, we've all kind of heard the pluses and the negatives, and I have a bunch of different things to say, too, and I, and I'm really hopeful, you know, we, I personally, several of us worked closely with Amy, and I know councilman came out, and there were some people that came out to the courts and to try to think of some things to get the pickleball the furthest north as we can, as you stipulated in the first piece, which is what, it was a yes vote with that on top of it. So the whole idea was like, oh, pickleball can get brand-new courts down here, and we can resurface, and, and then we're like, wait, why can't we just remake the current tennis courts, the pickleball courts, and then build a two-pod next to it? And then that way, we're in the exact same place we've been for the last three-plus years, when nobody has had any official complaints about the noise. So that's kind of all came to our head this weekend, and we're like, hey, let's put this together and let's make this an option, because that way tennis can get brand-new courts, they can be the ones to get the new courts and the new lighting. We're willing to sacrifice that. We're really just, you know, looking to make sure we can all get there. Kind of going to Dawson's point, the decision for Buschmaster was really made three years ago, not in this last couple of months, right? Because that decision was made when we did the dual stripes, and we did the nets, and we did all that piece. It was already decided that this was the best place. Going back to how, what Amy says, and reiterating Jen, and like, that is what Jen's job is. You know, Amy's job is, sorry, not Jen, Amy's job is to find what's best for the city and what needs to happen. Just a couple of things I'd like to throw out there, and one is the parking, and that's kind of something that keeps, kind of keeps coming up. And just kind of wanted to talk about, at the Thorpe Annex, which again, we'd be all for it, there's 166 parking spots there, but keeping in mind that also goes towards disc golf, softball, soccer, 26 spots to employees, right? So there's a lot parking. So it's 166 spots. Take away the 26 for employees, it's really, you know, only 153. Buschmaster has two parking lots, right? So there are 81 spots in the west and 72 at the east, so a total of 153 spots. So actually, Buschmaster has more parking when it comes down to the actual spaces. And again, it's a community park. If you live in the community, expecting most of those are walking to the park. Yes, those like myself, who live at Aspen, I have to, you know, Aspen Place, I have to drive to get to Buschmaster to play. And so parking, I, I've been there many a times.
And so parking, I've been there many a times, we were just there this weekend, we had a barbecue, and it was an FPA barbecue for those, you know, members, but anybody who came to play that morning was all invited to stay. There was no, nobody had to pay, nobody had to stay, everybody was included, had several different people that I hadn't even seen before, and they're like, what are you doing? I'm like, we're having barbecue. Stay, join, come, I didn't bring anything. I don't care, have fun, right? That's what we do, that's who we are. We're very accommodating. I get that there are some youth that don't get to play basketball, maybe from 8:00 to 12:00 in the morning, but I will guarantee you, if I am there or if there's an FPA member there at 12 o'clock, if there is a basketball player or a tennis player, they get priority on those courts. We walk away, we move, we adjust, and we will wait, because we know our time is from 8:00 to 12:00. We're very respectful of that. And we agree, wouldn't it be great if we had our own courts, and then they can play basketball all day long, and they can play tennis all day long, if we had our own dedicated courts? And putting it all in the one same spot, it just makes sense, it really does. So then anybody who likes to play, because I'll tell you, many pickleball players love to play basketball, and they bring their basketball along with their paddles. And so you get to play both at the same time. So those are just some of the few things I want to point out, as well as it's, it's just, it's, it's the, it's the part that I guess that hurts my heart is that we're really just fun people that want to play pickleball, and this isn't wanting to go against neighbors. It really isn't, and it hurts my heart that it is, because that's not our goal, that's not what we're trying to do. There is just no place for us to play pickleball in Flagstaff. I mean, this is it. You know, you have your two courts in Ponderosa, but if you play at Ponderosa, you have to bring, you have to bring your foursome with you. Like, you have to know what four people are going to come and play, because there's only two courts. When you go to Bushmaster, like myself, who I'm single and by myself, and sometimes I just want to go play, I know from 8:00 to 12:00, I can probably go find a game. There's going to be people there to play. That's the kind of point of open play and be able to have that open peace. And I really want it to be a place that people enjoy. And the Ramadas, and you talk about the Ramadas, I love it, it's my favorite times I get to go play on Saturday mornings. I work, so I don't get to play until Tuesday and Thursday nights, and that's the only time we get to play. And I will guarantee you, we don't play after 10:00, because the lights go out. We have no option. You know how dark it is when the lights go out at 10:00? Pitch black. You cannot see a thing. So there is no playing past 10:00. And I also will want to point, the new lights that they updated are now on an hour timer, and so you have to turn them every hour. Of course, we like, every time we're done with a game, we go turn it, because it takes about 20 minutes for it to turn back on once it goes off, because we learned that one night when we didn't go turn the timer. So you couldn't see anything. So the nice piece is, and when we aren't there, or even tennis or basketball, not just pickleball, if there's not tennis or basketball playing, those lights are not on. And if they're on, they're only on for an hour, because they automatically go out. So I do want to make that point clear as well. And the other point I really kind of want to make clear, too, is I think there was also kind of a misconception that if we had these permanent courts, that we are doubling or tripling the sound. I'm going to tell you right now, guarantee you, the majority of us are going to play in these dedicated courts, because we don't have to worry about different lines, what lines are happening, and if we have to wait a few minutes to play a game, our focus is going to be on those dedicated courts. Yes, is there going to be some overflow sometimes? Of course, right? It's just going to happen. But again, respectfully, we always have been and always will be. Our last one, not the, I was not here the previous one, but on the reconsideration piece, somebody got up and said that during the Saturday, during the tournament, some youth couldn't play basketball. And I went up to her afterwards, and I said, I want you to let me know, that's not okay. Not acceptable by me or anybody who is actual an FPA member. Now, mind you, there's many pickleball players who are not necessarily FPA, you know, paid members. Everybody is welcome to play. And she's like, well, yeah. She goes, I understand, but you weren't there. And I said, I wasn't, and I want you to know that that's not okay. If it's 12:00, those youth get the basketball court. That's how it's made, and that's what the expectation is. Here's my cell phone number, you call me if that ever happens again, because that's not how we want the community to be. And then she came up to me outside, and she was like, I just want to thank you for coming up and talking to me. And I'm like, I promise you, we're nice people. It's really, we're not trying to make this a negative thing against us and them and the community. I would love everybody to be able to do everything. And at the end of the conversation, both of them were like, well, you know, we really want to come out and play pickleball. I'm like, do it, come play, we're happy. She goes, well, but we don't, we have to buy a paddle. I said, no, we all have extra. We have extra paddles, we have extra balls, we're more than happy to teach anybody anytime. Please come out and play. Have yet to get a phone call from her, because I don't think it's happened, you know, because I will tell you, we are trying, we love the community. I love going on Saturdays and seeing all the Ramadas full. It's the best thing. It's like everybody being there, and to have it all in one place, how great is that? You don't have to go to three different places to be able to play three different sports, right? And also the importance of this proposal, and probably one of also the biggest pieces of this proposal, is doing the overlay of the basketball courts, and they might not be pickleball courts, but if they were not, the tennis courts. Because I will tell you, there are cracks very large, and we call them, you know, North Canyon, East, South, and West, because they're really big. And, you know, when you play home games and you hit a crack, everybody's like, oh, crack, and replay the point. Can't call a crack and replay the point at Bushmaster, or else we never get a game done. So we all just adjust, right? So there's many different points to that. And so I really just kind of want to know, and one other little point, and I just kind of want to put out there, and I'm not trying to say anything, and I get the reports on the sound and what they're all at, but did a decibel reading outside, and like, from the pickleball, the decibel never got higher than 52. I had a conversation with somebody face-to-face like this, and the decibel goes up to almost 70. So the, I get that the sound is there, but it's, you hit the ball, ball goes in the air, takes a while for it to go back down, then it gets hit again, and it's random time. So it's not, you know, all the time, like you said, and you can, we have very, very nice conversations without there being an issue. And I really just kind of hope I get it, and don't get me wrong, sound can always be a thing, and I'm not saying that that isn't a thing, but there's things we can do. You know, like we can do, I know Amy, I think, has a plan to do beautification. Well, we can put up some bushes that are on the, you know, the south side that help, like, so making sure that the sound doesn't, you know, go through. There's different things that we can do over time, and FPA is more than willing to help, do a fundraiser, do stuff, any things that we can do to help make that better. We really enjoy being there. Not saying we wouldn't go to Thorpe Annex, too, but I understand the planning for that and what the situation that is. And it's, Bushmaster, just with all of these different points, just really makes sense. And again, it's, the new plan puts us where we've been for the last three and a half years without anybody saying a word. So that's kind of how I want to end that. And I appreciate your guys' time, and I apologize that it's gone so far, and I apologize because I don't want this to be a community, us against them, and I'm hoping whichever happens, that we all can still be together and come and be a community, and be together, and help support in whichever way that we can do. And that's my feeling. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Smith.
I'm Sandra. I agree with most of the, with everything that's been said, actually, by the pickleball players. I'm, I lived by a park in Tempe when I was doing my working years, right across the street from Kiwanis Park, which is huge. And the best thing that we ever did, we did it because we were worried about the heat, we put double-pane windows, and we never heard anything in the park. That park was really loud. And when I go to Bushmaster to play, I go to see if there's any players, because I can't hear them from the parking lot. I have to look. So I'm not sure how the noise level is being so, such an issue. I know it's a big issue in some communities, so people jump on that as one of the things that have won that argument in other communities. Also, we live in the biggest Ponderosa forest in the world, so the loss of 10 trees, I think, is kind of a, I mean, really, I mean, we're not putting them to extinction. I just, the thing that I, when I was here the other, in May, I heard neighborhood residents testifying that they liked the pickleball because it brought, took out a bad element out of the park. And to me, if I was a council member, that would be enough right there to say, let's move on with more sports. Because from living in the other park, that was the one thing that bothered me the most, was when there were drug things going on, people at night sleeping on the tables where the families would come in with the kids and have picnics, you know, and peeing on the trees and the tables and things. So to me, that just seems like an element right there that would convince me to bring pickleball for the neighbors and for you. But anyway, thank you for your consideration. Please help us find somewhere to have pickleball. We need it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And we have some online commenters.
Yes, Mayor, we have three public commenters tonight. Our first one is Mary Walter. Mary, you may go ahead and address mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Mary Walter. I have lived by Bushmaster Park for the last 30 years, and I strongly urge you to reconsider putting pickleball in Bushmaster Park and moving it to Thorpe Park. And in saying this, I hope you consider your mission statement and the health and well-being of our Bushmaster neighborhood. So I have three points to represent today from past agenda items. First one, health and well-being. Pickleball is not for Bushmaster Park, surrounded by homes which have many senior citizens who have lived there a long time, basically all their lives, and citizens who have also lived there a long time. Now, you know, it feels like pickleball has come in to Bushmaster, because we are a low-income neighborhood. Pickleball is a rich man's sport. I've asked a few pickleball players if they have minorities, any blacks, any Native Americans, Mexicans, and they said, well, we have a few Mexicans, but no blacks, no Native Americans. I said, okay, walked away. But when I look at this, it is a rich man's sport. It does not belong in Bushmaster Park. So that being said, the health and well-being, it is not what senior citizens around there have paid for in living there. My point number two, carbon neutrality plan, helping all members of the community to meet health and wellness. This, again, will not happen if you put pickleball in Bushmaster Park for neighbors living around the area. There was lack of community involvement prior to the postcard being sent out. I know everybody praises Amy, but I think how she went about this and not involving the Bushmaster Park neighbors was very inconsiderate. The last phases of the park renovation, the neighborhoods were involved. And lastly, community benefits and, the help, and, I'm sorry, lastly, community benefits and consideration. The click-click noise drives neighbors crazy. It's like living next to a garbage truck backing up. Ding ding ding. Plenty of information on this on the website. Noises disruptive to home life and nerve-wracking. As far as parking, once a month or so, we have concert in the park. There are so many spaces, they're all full, even in the residential street. Also, other events are there. So I ask Council to please consider moving pickleball out of Bushmaster Park for the neighbor's sanity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Annalisa. Annalisa, you may go ahead and address mayor and council.
I'm Annalisa Hansen, and I am asking the city council to make thoughtful decisions, not in haste, and to think of long-term solutions that are appropriate for all communities. Additional pickleball courts do not belong in Bushmaster Park and would be better suited at Thorpe Park. Concerns about pickleball courts in Bushmaster Park are valid, and they're not unique to this park. We have shared information from both NPR and the New York Times, and we have worked to bring factual data from similar situations nationwide. While I'm not against pickleball as a sport, and I've heard about how much fun it is, and I believe it, Bushmaster Park is just not an appropriate space, and the pickleball community really deserves an appropriate location, and the community of Bushmaster Park deserves to use the park for their community as well. This community includes families, children, unhoused people, many of whom who are unable to speak at city council and share their own thoughts. The search for an appropriate space for the pickleball community will require more efforts from the city, but it is something that I think would really best benefit current and future pickleball players and current and future Bushmaster Park community members. All communities have special and intimate relationships, and it's not unique to pickleball to make these friendships and different kinds of relationships. We are asking the city council to reaffirm their decision to further ruminate on the best and most appropriate place for all different individuals who enjoy Bushmaster Park. While Bushmaster Park is shovel-ready, we have heard from both parties that Thorpe Park Annex would be more appropriate of a location for a very fast-growing sport. I would not want to dismiss the needs or desires of the pickleball community, and they have asked for more courts and Flagstaff, but they share that they would be happy with courts anywhere. But we are asking city council and the pickleball community to not dismiss or diminish the Bushmaster Park community's valid and real concerns of the additional pickleball courts in the smallest community park, which even if they are further north, they'll still be less than 150 feet from residential courts, from residential homes. Whoo! While I cannot hear pickleball courts from where I live, I still have concerns about the people who will be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ginger Legasi. Ginger, you may go ahead and address mayor and council. Ginger, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address mayor and council.
Mayor, perhaps Ginger can provide comments via email to publiccomment@flagstaffaz.gov.
Thank you. All right, that is all the in-person and online public comment that we have, and our city attorney has requested the opportunity to make a quick comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as you're aware, this item is before you as some have stated tonight as a reconsideration of a previous decision that was made by council. Typically, that can only happen at the next immediate meeting where the decision was made, the next meeting from that decision. Tonight, however, this comes back as more of a future agenda item request through the petition portion of the city charter. When that occurs, it's a little bit different than a regular motion for reconsideration, which would have to be made by a member of the council who voted in the direction that the action ultimately went. That is different tonight, because any council member can make a motion. I know the vote was 6-1, but any of the seven council members that voted that night could make a motion on this motion for reconsideration tonight. So with that, the first item for council to take up here is whether or not it's going to be reconsidered at all, and that would require a motion, a second discussion, and a vote. And I know other council members had comments first, but I just wanted to put that information in front of the public and in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sterling. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I do have a question for Amy. Is now good, Sterling? Okay, thank you. Come on down. And while she's walking, I do want to thank everyone for being here.
Actually, I take that back. We do need to know whether or not, if it's about potential reconsideration, then we do need to have the motion, the second, and the vote before we determine whether or not it's going to be reconsidered, so.
Just requesting information.
The item is on for reconsideration, and that is the next step, for council to make a motion second and vote on whether or not they want to reconsider. Mayor, it's up to you. Ultimately, that's my recommendation, but that's up to you.
Yes, please.
So is reconsideration to vote on that, to change your vote or just to revote?
Just to have a discussion over again. Just to discuss it again and...
If we pass right now, if somebody motioned to pass for reconsideration, that's just opening up the discussion again, so then we could revote.
Yes, and the action that occurred previously is no longer, and you would have to approve a new action tonight, either to award the contract as it was then or some different version of the contract.
Did I hear you say that... Did I hear you say that if there was a motion to reconsider, that that discussion couldn't happen until a future date?
No, no, it's tonight. It's posted for the agenda here tonight.
Okay. Well, Councilmember Matthews, did you have another comment or a question? I saw a Q and a C in the chat.
Well, that question I just.
That question I just asked the city attorney was not one of my Q or Cs. I have some comments to make, and I had a question about tournaments, but if we're not able to discuss it until we decide if we want to reconsider, right?
That's correct. The reason for this is if you, you already made a decision. When that decision was made, we moved on. We've now come back to it. But before you can have a discussion about whether you want to reconsider that decision, you have to have a separate item to reconsider it. And that's what E is. It's a motion, a second, and a vote on whether you want to reconsider. Now, you can make a motion and a second, and there can be discussion prior to a vote on that.
Yeah, I think I understand. So we could have a first and a second, and then a discussion, and then the vote?
Again, it would be a discussion about the reconsideration. If you want to get into the logistics of the actual contract, then that would come after the vote.
Councilmember McCarthy and then Vice Mayor.
Well, Mayor and Sterling, it seems like there's a bit of confusion here. So I think if we, if we, as a council, decide to talk about it, then we can ask any questions we want.
Right. And that's what item E is, and I'll just, I'll just read straight from it. It's the citizen petition, consideration of prior council action. If there's a motion and a second and a vote to do that, then we move to Roman numeral I under E, which is consideration and approval of the contract contingent on approval of the previous item.
Okay. So just so that we could at least have a discussion, because right now we're stonewalled. So so that we could have a discussion, I move that the Council will reconsider the prior council action regarding the contract with General Acrylics to design and build eight pickleball courts at Bushmaster Park. And I make that motion just so we can at least talk about it.
And I'll second.
Okay, now discussion. So can that come back to Councilmembers? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor had a comment or question.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this is kind of ironic. I was going to save these comments until after hearing what folks had to say. But I guess I'll go ahead and just share this. And I seem to remember sometime recently where I tried to make a motion just to discuss something, and I couldn't even get eye contact from anybody in the room. So I will not be changing my vote on this matter. And if you want to understand my reasoning, you can review the video of the last time Council took up this matter and voted to move it forward. It wasn't very long ago. I thought my comments were fair and thorough and respectful and adequately informed and acknowledging of all sides. But I came to a final decision on that, and I don't see any new information here that we didn't have at our disposal in May. As a general rule, I am very wary of advancing a citizen petition that seeks to undo a vote that Council literally just took. It sets a very troubling precedent and invites all sorts of confusion and hard feelings and circular debates. Council has a built-in mechanism for revisiting a vote before final adaptation, before a final adoption, and that's through a second read. I've seen Councilmembers change their mind between reads, and I emphatically defend the right for any of us to do that at the days because people can change their minds, and there should be a mechanism for that. But I don't think that entertaining the citizen petition is the appropriate path forward here, and I will not support doing so.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Okay, so now I have questions for Amy, and I'm good to ask?
So again, those questions would come under Roman numeral I. You have to, as a council, decide as a majority, four or more, whether you want to reconsider it. And then you can have those discussions about the logistics of what that contract could be.
Okay.
This is just a standalone question, item E, on reconsideration of the item. So we would need a call for a vote.
Thank you.
So Sterling, if there were questions about a change to the design, that's completely on Parks and Rec staff and within the existing contract amount?
So the reason why, you can ask questions of them about that if you want to reconsider your previous decision. But you voted 6-1 to move forward, and that has happened. The only way you can undo that is to vote to reconsider it, and then you can move to Roman numeral I to have all of those discussions you want. In fact, I believe staff is even prepared with additional information and would be able to answer questions about the contract. But until the vote occurs and there are four that want to reconsider it, that can't be done because there's a current council action already completed that has to be rewound first. That's the best way I can put it.
I get that now. Okay. And so I, if we did move forward to reconsider, we could stick with the original vote under I?
That is what would stand. That's a council action that stands right now until you reconsider it by a majority. That's a vote of four right now. You can't change that contract or do anything with it until you decide you want to reconsider it. And then we move to I where you can do that.
Okay. So Councilmember, oh, excuse me, sorry. Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember McCarthy. From the first?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so let's go Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember McCarthy.
I seconded so that we could have a discussion, and Sterling could walk us through this. It doesn't mean that we're changing anything. It means we're going to have a discussion if we vote, correct?
That's correct. If four vote in favor of reconsidering.
Okay. So that gives us an opportunity if we want it.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, and this is an add, I just want to acknowledge Vice Mayor's comments. I think it does set a very bad precedent to change our minds. I haven't heard anything different than I heard the first time, except for out of the city attorney's comments. Still learning how this process goes. I'm trying to think back of when that was, when you proposed it, and it's still kind of confusing to me, but I'm understanding it now. But the comments I wanted to make, because I really feel that it's important to acknowledge the community that is surrounding Bushmaster Park. Quality of life is really important. And, you know, I hear noise where I live, not pickleball, but I have a lot of construction going on and the hammering of those rocks into the night. So I get noise. I have a noise issue anyway. But, you know, I did do research. I, you know, we try to do background research on things that maybe don't immediately affect us, but we want to cast our votes, as I did the first time this came to Council, to try to understand both sides, because there's always two sides, and there's always very legitimate both sides. And since I can't ask questions, I'll put some of this just in a, out there in the universe. How I understand it is pickleball has a decibel rating of about 80, if you're right there.
So we're getting into the meat of the discussion. We have to have a vote on whether Council wants to have that discussion first. I'm really sorry to be so. Because there's a council action that already occurred, you have to unwind that action by voting to reconsider before you can have the discussion about reconsidering.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask my other council member friends to allow us to at least discuss this. It may be that all of you vote the exact same way you did last time. That's fine, but let's at least talk about it. I have a couple of thoughts here that I put down in my notes that I don't think Sterling would let me bring up right now. But I think if we had a discussion, I could bring them up. And then if you all vote the same way you did last time, I respect that and accept that. But I ask you that we at least have a brief discussion about it. I'll leave it at that.
Council? Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Sterling, I'm not sure if this works, but can I call for the question?
You can. You can ask the chair to call for the question.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So then, item F is still up for consideration, or that?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So item F, what is your direction? Is there anyone who wants to consider the citizens' petition for pickleball courts at Thorpe Park Annex? Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm just saying I support it. I'm not, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. So I do not see support for that petition or discussing the petition further. So we will move on to item number 12, discussion items. And I'll give a couple of minutes for the chambers to clear out if people would like to leave.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I can explain. What you voted for previously stands. And the, nobody wanted to pick up the second petition, so that petition is, has ended. It's been heard by Council. Per the charter, it has to be heard within 31 days. And Council didn't want to move forward with the discussion on that second petition.
Okay. And I had some additional comments to make to say why, why I was going the way that I was going and that during that discussion would have been the time, as Vice Mayor brought up, right? During the discussion to express?
Right.
Okay. All right. So moving down to discussion items. 12A, City Council Discussion Regarding the City of Flagstaff's Tobacco 21 Ordinance.
Mayor and Council, Sterling Solomon, City Attorney. On July 2, 2019, present, the City Council at that time adopted what is known as the Tobacco 21 or the T-21 ordinance, raising the minimum age to 21 for the sale of tobacco products in Flagstaff. Just a quick note, it does not penalize persons under the age of 21 for purchasing tobacco products. It does penalize retailers who sell tobacco products to anyone under 21. The Flagstaff Police Department is not charged with enforcement of the T-21 ordinance. It's got provisions in it separately for enforcement that I'll talk about briefly here in a moment. Shortly after the T-21 ordinance adoption in the summer of 2019, the federal government enacted a law raising the age to 21 for the purchase of tobacco products. I say shortly after, that was in December of 2019. Again, the City Council adopted its ordinance six months earlier in July of 2019. So the federal law raised the age to 21, and that was an important development, because when the Flagstaff City Council adopted the local T-21 ordinance, it was unclear whether the federal or state governments would enact such laws. But the fact that the federal law is now in place may be a factor for Council in considering the local T-21 ordinance. Licensing and enforcement provisions in the T-21 ordinance do exist, but those city programs have not yet been created. The plan was to fund these programs with the fees from issuing tobacco sales licenses within the city, and that's a separate program that, again, hasn't been established. An enforcement program also needed to be established. The enforcement could be contracted out to others or could be done in conjunction with other government entities. Tonight, Erica Mansour, and I'm sorry if I pronounce that wrong, the Tobacco Enforcement Unit Attorney at the Arizona Attorney General's Office is here to share further details about the potential for collaborating on enforcement. I will turn some time to her in a moment. But for now, the licensing and enforcement programs, again, haven't been created. Soon after the adoption of the local ordinance and establishment of the federal law raising the age to 21, the COVID pandemic occurred. It disrupted many city services, and the city braced for a potential recession, among other uncertainties. These portions of the ordinance were delayed. As I mentioned, Erica is here from the AG's office, and she's going to explain a few further options about possible collaboration for enforcement on the T-21 ordinance. Erica?
Thanks, Sterling. Mayor and Council. My name is Erica Mansour. I'm with the Arizona Attorney General's Office, with the Tobacco Enforcement Unit, and specifically with the Youth Tobacco Inspection Program. Our program has been in place since 2002 as a statewide youth tobacco inspection program. We work in close collaboration with the Arizona Department of Health Services. And since 2011, we've worked very closely with the FDA Inspection Program that also does federal youth tobacco inspections. We have a, I'm sorry, and we have a collaborative relationship with that program as well. Our program operates statewide and in every county, including Coconino County. We conduct roughly 100 inspections in Coconino County, many of which are in Flagstaff currently. Our youth tobacco inspections involve inspections much like the ones that are anticipated in the ordinance. We have undercover youth volunteers who go out into the community with law enforcement officers. They go into a tobacco retailer, attempt to buy a tobacco product. If they do buy the tobacco product, then we issue them a couple of state law citations, one to the individual clerk and one to the business itself. I'm happy to answer further questions about kind of the logistics of the program, but that's the basics. This program is ongoing, and it is something that, right now, the city has access to. All of that information is public information. Those inspections are publicly available. So this is certainly something that, at any time, Flagstaff Police or any kind of licensing agency could access that information, observe the results of those inspections, see who has failed inspections recently. We can follow up and provide information from the AG's office, like police reports, copies of citations, and other things that, again, these are public documents readily available. So if we're talking about potential for collaboration, that's kind of like the first level of collaboration. That's, that's something that's readily available right now. As we're looking at additional collaboration, we. As we're looking at additional collaboration, we have been working kind of in the very early stages right now with the City of Tucson, which as I'm sure you are aware, is one of the, the only other cities in Arizona that has a tobacco retail license. And we've been working with them on a little bit more of a collaborative environment where when we're in their city and we have scheduled inspections with our youth volunteers and our resources and our program that's been developed over the last 20 years, they're able to physically send a police officer from their department out with us into the field. And so, they can take advantage of, you know, all of our protocols. We've got the kids on board, we've got all that taken care of, the paperwork and everything. And they join us out in the field so they can either simply observe the transactions and observe any potential violations and report back to their licensing authority. If they choose, they could issue citations under their city ordinance in addition to or instead of any citations or regulatory violations that are noted under the state or the FDA violations. So, we think that that's really a fantastic opportunity for collaboration. I mean, at the end of the day, the goal is fewer tobacco products in the hands of kids. So, this is really a way to kind of expand the tools in the toolbox for everybody. We're going to be out there anyway and this can increase the number of inspections that we can potentially do. So, that's certainly another option. Beyond that, we have some additional resources that we're absolutely willing to share. We, like I said, we have a long-standing program, so we have all the paperwork. More than happy to share copies of paperwork if you folks would like to take a look. And also, we have in place something called the Arizona Retail Tobacco Training Class. This is a class that is currently available at no cost. And it is put on in collaboration between the Health Department, the AG's Office and your County Health Department. So, this is a class kind of like tobacco school or traffic school. It's tobacco school, right? It's a diversion program, deep dive educational class for tobacco retailers. So, that's something that could easily be put in place and leveraged as well as part of an enforcement scheme. So, I'm happy to answer any kind of questions you have about the nuts and bolts of it. And I'll definitely stick around if questions occur to you. But that's the, the basics of our program, some ideas.
Thank you. All right. So, council members or, City Attorney?
So, yes, thank you. And I appreciate Erica for making the trip up here before the holiday. Again, before you now is the T-21 Ordinance for discussion in light of the fact that there is a federal law now in place. Tonight, council has a few options. You can ask staff to consider adjustments to the T-21 Ordinance for collaboration with the AG's Office on enforcement. That would require a code amendment to give PD authority to work together with them to piggyback, so to speak, on their compliance checks and create citations and reports, which would then work their way through the municipal process. You would at the very least have to keep the age limit of 21 in your ordinance. You can also, as another option, give staff direction to implement, implement the current ordinance as written. That would mean finding or creating the budget to fund the enforcement, the licensure portions of the ordinance, which would come from the fees, but we would have to find the organizations or the divisions for those to go in here in the City of Flagstaff. Of course, you can take time to consider and ask staff to research options. Come back to you after the, the council break as well. This was mainly just to give you the opportunity to discuss initially tonight. Those representing both sides of the issue have been advised that this is on the agenda. So, I'll leave it to you, Council, to listen to any public comment that may be forthcoming and to give us staff direction as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. So, before I take public comment, I'll ask if there are any clarifying questions from council members. Councilmember Matthews?
Erica, I'll ask you. So, when you're up here already doing your investigation, are you investigating on the state law or the federal law?
So, with the AG's Office, we're exclusively enforcing the state law. However, we work collaboratively with the FDA Inspection Program and they're conducting investigations under the federal law. So, we actually already have a bit of collaboration in place where we have one state officer and one federal officer in the car at the same time and then youth that are cross-certified in both programs. So, this is actually kind of the model that we could use. I mean, we could add a city folk, a city person in there and have all three enforcement going on at the same time or any two.
So, currently, you're doing your inspections in Coconino County, several in Flagstaff, without the assistance of local law enforcement, is that correct?
That's correct. Our program does statewide. There's actually a federal mandate called the SINAR mandate that requires state law inspections to be conducted in every state. So, that's one of the, one of the reasons behind our program.
And if it goes to the city courts on a violation if the city issues a citation, but if you issue a citation, it's handled in a different jurisdiction?
We issue our citations into justice courts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Erica. Just to clarify on that point in, in terms of the inspections that are happening now. So, if we were to pursue the collaborative effort, would there be grounds or room for, rather than enforcing the, the state policy in conjunction with the federal, would there be room for considering the federal and city since those are more aligned in this particular case? Is that a question that you can answer?
I can't because I'm, I'm not in charge of the federal program. But I can tell you, we work very, very collaboratively. So, that's absolutely, you know, a conversation that we could have.
Councilmember Harris?
So, I just want to make sure that I understand. So, when you come up, our state law is 18, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so when you come up, you're looking for violations of people who are selling to under 18, is that correct?
Yes, we use youth volunteers who are under 18.
You use or you look for? I guess what I'm trying to, so if a business, if I'm a 16-year-old and I go into a business and they sell me a pack of cigarettes, that's the law that you're citing or you're working under?
Right. So, we actually have youth volunteers that work with us who are 16, 15, 16, 17 years old. And they go into the store, attempt to buy the products. So, that's when we would issue a state law citation. Because that would be the violation of the under 18.
So, if a person came in and they were 20 and you sold them a pack of cigarettes, you wouldn't enforce the 21 law?
We can't because it's not, the state law cuts us at 18. That would be the federal law. So, that's one of the reasons why it is great that we work collaboratively, collaboratively with them. There are some limitations to the federal program as well. But we, we find that kind of dovetailing the programs together gets the most comprehensive enforcement.
So, knowing that the federal law is 21, your folks wouldn't deal with that? If it was a 20-year-old that was buying cigarettes?
Right. We wouldn't be able to directly issue a citation, for example.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
You've had this program in existence for a little while. Have you had any cases where people between 18 and 21 purchased tobacco products? And in those cases, were any, what was done to the retailer? Were they fined or were they just slapped on the wrist or were they put out of business? Or what, what's the actual experience of what's happened?
So, for retailers that sell to someone who is over 18, they would be facing federal law penalties. So, there are federal inspections that are happening, federal regulatory inspections. Those are publicly available. The FDA has a database with, with all of those inspection results. But regardless of whether the youth is 15, 16, 17, or 18, 19, 20, the penalties are the same under the federal law. So, the first violation is a warning letter and then it's elevated.
Hold on for a second. My, my question specifically addresses what has actually happened? Have you put anybody out of business? Have you, has any, or the federal government, have they fined people? Have they done anything? Or do they just kind of take data and, and move on?
Oh, they absolutely have.
Actual actions. That's what I want is actual actions.
Yeah. And the best place to, to find that would be on the, the database because that's just got, it shows all of the actions that have been taken. But in Arizona, I know we have had businesses that have hit the maximum financial penalty, which is over $11,000. Now, that was before the 21. So, that's not with the 18, 19, 20, that's, that's under 18. But the federal government, it takes them a while. The feds move a little more slowly than we do. But there have been significant penalties in Arizona, yes.
Significant penalties for cases of 18, between 18 and 21?
The inspections.
As opposed to significant actions for under 18?
It's really a function of time. What happened was the, the federal law, the age was raised to 21 months before the COVID-19 pandemic hit. And then FDA inspections shut down for about 14 or 15 months, shut down entirely. So, no inspections were conducted. And then when they restarted, they were just starting to, you know, kind of get things back up and running. It was a very slow start. And the, in order to rack up the penalties, the first violation is a warning letter. So, there's no penalties at that point. So, really, it's a function of time, but based on their prior enforcement efforts, I would expect to see accumulation of penalties in the near future. I do know there have been at least warning letters sent out for individuals that were 18 or over.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, it's probably a little too early to tell, but there's some indication that they would follow up.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to restate and clarify, if we went into a collaborative agreement with the AG's Office, that's when, when you're doing your inspections up here in this area looking for the 18-year and younger sales, then we'd have a law enforcement, a local law enforcement officer on that call as well. But you only use people that are 18 or younger. So, then, I'm just confused on how we would then be able to, to investigate the sale of tobacco to somebody over 18 but under 21?
So, in the collaborative picture that you just described, you know, going out with us and working when, when we have our youth volunteers that are under 18, this is an option that's available tomorrow. You know, we could, we could put a Flagstaff officer in the car tomorrow and they could join us out on inspections. I will say that as of right now, Coconino County has the highest failure rate of tobacco retailers in the state. It's almost double the average. So, there are plenty of violations that are happening even with youth who are only under 18. So, I think that, you know, this is, some enforcement could happen right away. There have been multiple efforts at the state level to raise the age to 21. There's some federal pressures to raise the age to 21. You know, I don't have a crystal ball and know when that's going to happen, but I think it's likely to happen within the next couple of years at least. So, at that point, the state law would be aligned with the, the local law and it would certainly simplify things. But like I said, with the state efforts, that would be available immediately. We do work with the FDA program. We'd be happy to, you know, expand the conversation to formally include the FDA program as well.
Any other clarifying questions? Council, I mean, Vice Mayor Aslan?
You're fired. I guess I do have a question. And this is, I, I'd like to understand what the outcome of this conversation is better. Are we providing a recommendation to your office, Sterling, about how to proceed? I know this is going to come back to us at some level. I think some of my questions could wait until the scheduled executive session. So, I'm just curious as to what direction you're looking for and what the nature of this conversation is right now. Because I, I, I do have some clarifying questions. I have some concerns. I don't think they're urgent, but I will need them addressed depending on what we're supposed to do this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I, I just want to make sure everyone is clear. This was just for you to discuss potential options tonight. And if you'd like me to explore, you know, further details of collaboration and what that might look like, both with the state and the federal government, that would be a welcome bit of direction to come back to you with. I did not want to go down that route. If council wanted to just move forward with the ordinance as it is right now. And I, I just, I'm looking for some sort of direction on what kind of detail you would like me to look into to come back to you, to brief you on further. And that would include an executive session, not just a, because there would be legal advice involved in that, not just the motion or the item on the public floor like it is tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sterling. And thank you, Mayor. I will have a couple of comments later, some thoughts. But it seems like we have some time to mull over this conversation. And generally, I'm in favor of moving forward to have a discussion, looking forward to public comment.
All right. Jeremy G.
I don't blame you for not being able to spell my last name. So, that's fine. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jeremy Gorks. I'm General Manager of Speedy Wash &amp; Field located at 915 South Milton Road. I came here because of an issue that was brought up to me by my colleagues, that is, other gas station convenience store owners that are independent operators. A lot of the questions have already been answered. In particular, when it comes to the creation of a separate tobacco tax license. I would just say this. If you are going to go forward with that separate tobacco tax license, I would be more than happy to provide my services to any committee that would be formed on that. I can even answer any questions in regard to even the policies of Speedy Wash &amp; Field. I myself am personally very anal retentive when it comes to law, when it comes to tobacco, OTP and the sales of vape. Even before the T-21 Ordinance was passed, I would not sell Juul or any electronic product to anybody that was under the age of 21. I take that very seriously when I am being told that, especially from the Food and Drug Administration, that they are considering a pandemic. Even after the fact that the feds had stepped in, made it national. I actually was for it back then. I was not against it up until I saw what happened with the sales of Juul pods. Because the moment I turned it to 21, I had a lot of high schoolers coming in, looking for it for their underage friends. And once being a teenager myself, I mean, there used to be ways of getting around, getting somebody to sell through a buddy of yours that was over the age of 18. So, with that particular knowledge, I use that in hand. Again, I have no problem with the, the City of Flagstaff or the State of Arizona getting together. I think that would be a great idea just because it would be nice to have a Flagstaff police officer. I have only ever had been cited once at the federal level back in 2012 when the business was taken over by the Prima family. That was an interesting experience with the FDA, but we have passed that. And since then, I've made even stricter rules at my site. I do invite anybody that is either here in the audience tonight or members of the City Council or even the City Attorney himself to come on by and talk to me about this. I can even tell you how I train my employees on how to handle situations of selling to people over and under the age. So, again, thank you for your time. And I just want to say one more thing. The pickleball situation was a little bit too much TMI for me. So, I will be leaving shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Barnes?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for putting the tobacco ordinance item on your agenda. My name is Mark Barnes with the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation. And I'm here in support of the city's work on this issue and would encourage the city to, to pick up where they, where they left off on implementing something. Perhaps it is a collaboration with the Attorney General's Office and the other efforts that are already ongoing. The Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation was founded in 1996 by a physician that did his residency a few miles from here and maintains a residence in Flagstaff. The organization has spent the last 25 years working at the local level to encourage cities to put in place regulations to effectively reduce access to tobacco-related products to individuals under 21. At the time the federal government increased the tobacco sales age to 21, hundreds of local governments in a number of states had established 21 as the minimum tobacco sales age for retailers. To its credit, Flagstaff was one of these communities. In approving the ordinance, Flagstaff acknowledged that tobacco is a highly addictive and deadly product. One, and one that is often marketed in a way that targets youth and adult, and young adults. And unfortunately, that target marketing of tobacco to young adults is working in Arizona. Last week, Channel 12 News broke down a new CDC study to illustrate the Arizona-specific results. And what did it? And what did it show? It showed Arizona is second in the country as far as increase in vaping by young adults, people ages 18 to 24. Between the years 2016 and 2022, there was 142% increase in the sale of vaping products in Arizona in this age group. We know that, we know from past experience that merely adopting laws or ordinances prohibiting the sale of tobacco to youth under 21 is insufficient to prevent the actual sale of tobacco to individuals under this age. Age of sale restrictions only work if there's a credible threat of regular unannounced compliance checks in every retail location every year. So although the federal sales age requirement is 21, the federal enforcement is insufficient because it's just too infrequent. It's just, there's too many retails, there's just too few, few compliance checks now. What's needed, and your existing ordinance covers it, is the compliance checks that provide enforcement, the enforcement mechanism to make the federal and, and your local 21 sales age requirement work. Note two things, for the retailers and consumers that use these products, all the products they, they, they sell now can continue to be sold or purchased in the community. We're not banning any particular substances or restricting them. For retailers who do not sell to those underage, nothing changes. They pass their compliance checks and are largely unaffected by the ordinance, other than having to secure a license. And we've tried to put in place a law that would, would apply statewide. However, all the powerful forces at the state capitol have made that impossible and unlikely in the, in the near future. Also, because youth at this age often do not travel far, a local, a local ordinance can be effective.
Thank you. Next up, Bernice Carver.
Hi, I'm Bernice Carver, I live in Flagstaff. I'm retired from the Coconino County Public Health Services District Tobacco Use Prevention Program. I also worked 10 years at the school district when we passed the first tobacco-free school district in Arizona, whose model became a world policy model for tobacco-free school districts in the world. At the Tobacco Conference, the World Tobacco Conference in Perth, Australia. I've been working in tobacco control since 1986 as a volunteer and as a, as a paid program manager for the Health Department. Well, health educator, not program manager. I've read the ordinance, the T-21, I really applaud the city of Flagstaff for doing this because our kids matter so much. Tobacco addiction is really hard. I, I was also a certified tobacco cessation specialist for the state of Arizona while I worked for the Health Department. I'm now retired, and I help people wherever I can, as, for free, to help them to quit, as long as they pass it on to other people. And anyway, this is really important, there were four things that I looked at. I think citizens' complaints ought to be, especially from parents. Parents know where their kids are getting tobacco. The kids, you know, I, I've turned in so many stores in this city when my kids were addicted to back, to tobacco, and other people's kids. Also, I'd like to see a higher fine for the other tobacco sales, other than those defined in the, as a tobacco official, tobacco retailer. I've seen people selling cartons of tobacco over by Fort Tudhill when there were events over there out of the trunk of their car, they were on the side of the road. Now, these people don't have an official retail, you know, they're selling them out of the trunk of their car. This could be a kid at Coconino or Flagstaff High, you know, selling them themselves, and I know that happens. There are also, also, I think Coconino Public Health Services District Tobacco Program, which is funded by the $2 tax on each pack of cigarettes, would be an ideal enforcement agency. And they collaborate with the Attorney General's Office. And one of the things that I, well, I'll, I'll ask this. I also, on page four, the cost of the licenses, it talks about the administration. I would like to see enforcement included in that. And also-
Thank you, Bernice.
Higher fines for other sales.
Thank you. We have an online commenter.
Yes, Mayor, our commenter tonight's going to be Tricia Hart. Tricia, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Trish Hart, and I'm here today representing the Arizona Food Marketing Alliance. The Arizona Food Marketing Alliance represents retail grocery and convenience stores throughout the state and in, and in Flagstaff. And we just wanted to let you know that if you are moving forward with any type of ordinance or any types of revisions, we'd very much welcome the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city to, to discuss any changes moving forward. We strongly support enforcement. We believe that as responsible retailers of tobacco and vapor products, we believe it's very important to make sure that children and youth do not have access to these, to these products. And with that, I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this issue, and we look forward to being a resource as, as this discussion moves forward.
Thank you. All right, council, are there additional questions? Or do you want to voice your potential direction to staff? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, I'll go first. Yeah, I think it's appropriate for this conversation to continue, so I definitely voice my support for direction to explore this further. I do have concerns. It seems like there are going to be some gaps between what the, the state AG's office offers and what's federally available in terms of enforcement. And I want to make sure that moving forward in Flagstaff, we are enforcing our Tobacco 21 ordinance that we put on the books. I, I believe Councilmember McCarthy and I were the only two currently sitting councilmembers who were on council at the time that was passed. And I just want to share a little bit more about that experience. First of all, I just want to acknowledge, I think what we have here is an unfunded mandate, and that is definitely something that we need to find a solution for. As long as we're not shying away from the objective and the goal of making sure that tobacco stays out of the hands of, of people 21 years and younger. And I want to thank you, Jeremy G, for being with us tonight. Not only for what you do in the community with your proactive solo approach to making sure that tobacco's not getting, and attractive kinds of tobacco aren't getting in the hands of our youth, but also for sitting through the entire meeting this evening in order to make your comments and to hear this conversation. And that goes with the other ones who are here for this conversation as well. Thank you for your input. You know, what's important to me is that we make sure, as part of this process, however we move forward, that we reengage and bring into the conversation the Flag High Tobacco 21 Group and the Coconino High School CATS Group. CATS stands for Coconino Against Tobacco Students. And the Tobacco 21 ordinance that we passed was entirely driven and organized by these youth. Obviously, they've aged a few years now, and a lot of them as a block are four years older, as are all the rest of us. But I have no doubt that those voices and the, the voices of new high school students that follow them were encouraged by what we did as a council and want to see some teeth put into that effort. And they're going to want to be a part of the conversation, and they're going to want to have explained to them why we are changing our approach. I think that will obviate a lot of problems that we could have by engaging with them. We can bring them along and help them understand why an unfunded mandate is untenable, and we can move forward in concert and synergy together with a plan that works for everybody. But I, I do think it's important for us to engage those groups. I think it would be important for the city to do that as part of my direction, but you can bet I will also be reaching out to these, the points of contact with those organizations myself over the summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Am I next, because I thought I was after some other people, but.
Um.
I can go.
Yes, please go.
I'm, I'm definitely in, in support of this, and I understand that we had some young people working with us when we first came up with this, and I agree that we ought to definitely pull them back in. But I don't want us to wait, because we don't know where those folks are. So if we can get something out to them, and if Vice Mayor knows who they are and where they are, do that. But I want us to go ahead and move forward and not dawdle. So that's my, that would be my only comment.
And City Manager, you had indicated that you had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. And thank you to the public speakers on this matter. I want to weigh in, not on the legalities or some of the, the comments shared. For the record, certainly agree with the intention here to, to see enforcement be effective and to address this problem with underage sales. I was not here when T-21 was discussed a few years ago, but I'm, I do, I am of the opinion that the circumstances have changed, and there are tools available to the city that were, were not available when that discussion occurred four years ago. The biggest tool, of course, is the federal law now in place that was not in place when T-21 was being considered, that makes the sale of tobacco products to people under the age of 21 unlawful. Also, we're hearing from the AG's office that there is opportunity for collaborations to occur. The comment I want to share with you is that the T-21 ordinance as drafted contained, or made reference to a separate licensing program that would likely be housed somewhere in the city organization, but not PD. And underlying that, the need obviously to hire more staff and to have more care in, in the drafting of an ordinance that would encompass all the licensing requirements, enforcement requirements, fine structure. I can only impress upon council the discussion that led to the passage tonight of the short-term rental ordinance. It's been on the table for a year. And preceding that year was two years of data collection. These things take time. And in the end, in the best-case scenario, they can be done with outside services without having to hire new staff or allocate new resources in a situation where resources are already constrained to do the many things that are being asked of us, and the, the many things that we want to do to meet the needs of our community, but resources are constrained. Putting in place a separate licensing provision to regulate something that is now already regulated at the federal level, level, I think needs to have very careful scrutiny. And if there's opportunity to collaborate and beef up our enforcement mechanisms while avoiding a new layer of governance within the city's structure, it makes all the sense in the world to be looking in, in that direction. Again, these tools were not available to us a few years ago, they are now. So I just think, as, as the comment was asked at the outset by the Vice Mayor, what is the direction being sought of council as this policy matter comes back to the table? I would respectfully ask that the direction be one that is direct, that premised more on current resources being utilized to enforce a program without the need to institute a new licensing regiment, and without the need to hire new staff to implement. As your manager who oversees the budget, who oversees the allocation of resources throughout our organization, I think that's of paramount importance right now. So that would be my suggestion of the direction that we should be going in. Thank you for my, for hearing my comments.
Thank you. And Councilmember House, my apologies, I didn't see that you had a C in the chat, so please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I very much agree with that, City Manager Clifton, and that would be probably my direction in this as well, is I 100% want to see this moving forward and looking at how the ordinance that we have in place now aligns with, or can be informed by the new federal standards that have been put in place. I think we do need to look carefully and, and have that legal examination of what is possible with the federal tools and resources that are available, and how those align with or, or are potentially challenged by what exists at the state level right now, with that age still being 18 in Arizona. But I, I was not on council at the time that this came forward, but I remember very specifically sitting, like, right back in the audience when this was being discussed before council at the time, and being so impressed and encouraged by the youth voices that were coming forward to push this forward. So that is where my perspective on this comes from, is the importance of maintaining our commitment to those voices and maintaining our dedication to this and, and youth health and safety and that just very important request that was brought forward. I don't want to see us backtrack on that. I do want to see us take a look at how we can have more enforcement on our local ordinance in conjunction with what's happening at the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Sweet, and then Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing the same, we can get really bogged down in processes if we try to create another department, another line item. And two, three years down the road, I think it's more efficient and effective for us to utilize and collaborate with partnerships in the AG's office, and even if it's in the federal office, to work together with them so we can have instantaneous support and enforcement in protecting our youth from, you know, making decisions that, I mean, I, I was smoking when it was, you know, acceptable as a young high schooler, because that's how you were cool. And it wasn't until I was almost at the end of my twenties, when I had a collapsed lung and double pneumonia, did I realize that it was a bad health choice, and now you've got that looming issue of, you know, what damage do you do to your, you know, your lungs? And so I think having a very active and effective ordinance or collaboration of an ordinance do help protect our youth from making decisions that they regret later. And, you know, at 15, 16, 17, I think they're, they're still too young to make those health choices that they don't realize the impact to. So I think the quickest and the most efficient way to move forward is to work on collaboration. And after our recess, hearing what the city attorney and the city manager comes up with that's most cost-effective and most efficient and effective, I think is the best route to go.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. So I am in line, I definitely would like to see collaboration that does not involve utilizing new resources. And I was in the audience as well when this came about, and I appreciate the comments about the youth. I think that's something that I would like to see them stay involved in this, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Aslan and House. And that's it, thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm open-minded about some changes in our ordinance if, I'll repeat that word, if it results in effective enforcement.
All right. A question about Coconino County, they do not have an ordinance, is that correct?
I do not believe so, no.
But the, the county Health and Human Services Department has a program for, for smoking cessation or, or education.
That's correct.
And so I'm- And so I'm hoping that along this path, that we can engage them and ask them how we might be helpful to their efforts in terms of education in the community. And I don't necessarily mean staff, but council members, you know, how we can help amplify their message. And also maybe encourage the county to adopt an ordinance if they think that that fits within their goals for the future. And I too, so it looks like we're unanimous that we are supportive of your office taking a look at how we can, what our options are and how we can effectively enforce without the licensing portion of it. And also, maybe we want to add this to our legislative agenda for encouraging the state to adopt the same age for cigarette, purchasing cigarettes.
Mayor and Council, I have very clear direction on moving forward to effectively enforce, but doing so without a licensure program. I think we can explore options on collaboration as well, as was clearly the key theme in all of your comments, as well as the city manager's, and I'll work with him as we move forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Council. And thank you. I hope you get to stay for the parade tomorrow, or do you have to go back down to Phoenix? Okay, so we are moving down to item number 13, Future Agenda Item Request. The first one is a fair from the Vice Mayor to place a Future Agenda item regarding a discussion about a pond next to Ponderosa Trails neighborhood, and he is going to talk about that.
Thank you very much. Real quickly, I just want to say I'm eager to get to two from because I have an apology, a sincere apology I'd like to make for some tonal moments in the last conversation that I'm sitting here regretting. I think those need to be aired, and I will get around to that, but it's neither here nor there when it comes to this fair item. I just didn't want that sitting out there too much. So, the word pond is in Ponderosa Trails? No. I believe City Clerk may have some photos that have been passed around to the rest of Council, but she's able to share them on the stream as well so people can see what we're talking about. Thank you so much, Stacy. So what I'm proposing is that we allow city staff to explore the feasibility of a permanent perennial pond infrastructure here in this location. You can see that even on Google Maps, there is a detention or retention, I think it's a detention basin that's built into the area between Polium and I-17 just north of the airport. It's also just north of the Cosmic Gray Sheep's Tunnel. And it's a really, really neat amenity that's available only partially during, only seasonally when it fills with water, and then it drains or seeps out and it's gone. So I'll let Stacy sort of flip back and forth through these photos so the public can see what this can look like when it's at its best after a really strong winter that we just had. I don't know if it's the right thing to do to invest the time and energy into a permanent sort of infrastructure here, but I do know that we as a city and certain partners are having conversations about how to achieve the best use of this area, which is very close to our Airport Enterprise Fund and some locations which are being talked about at length for development just north of the road that John Wesley Powell, next to the airport. And so I thought it was timely to bring this up as an idea. It was first brought to me by the public, some residents of Ponderosa Trails, that were wondering why that pond always went away because they were so excited to have it. And also, by the way, in the winter, it freezes over and it allows for a lot of ice skating out there, and I've seen people playing ice hockey out there on a number of occasions. A couple of questions I would have is, what is the feasibility of engineering the soil there to hold that water year-round? You know, obviously, we're going to have some flood and water runoff and drainage questions, maybe even mosquito questions that need to be answered. I want to know what the cost might look like. I would want to know what the maintenance cost over time would be. And then there's even a more specific question, which is getting literally into the weeds a little more. I have heard that there are local endemic invertebrates that populate that pond, and it could be problematic to put fish in that pond. But I would want to explore the possibility of stocking the pond with fish as part of the recreational activities available for that space. Anyway, just a lot of questions, really don't have a stake in making this happen one way or the other. I just thought it was a really interesting question from a Ponderosa Trails resident, and I believe it would make an incredible amenity for the whole city, especially if it was stocked, and it would solve a lot of problems. I think it would be a really nice solution to how are we developing that specific land in conjunction and synergy with some of the other development that's going on in that area. And maybe the county could have a stake in this as well. We definitely partnered on the Cosmic Gray Sheep's Tunnel funding-wise to make that happen because it provides access to Fort Tuttle, and I can imagine a lot of people parking at Fort Tuttle, taking that tunnel under I-17 and enjoying some fishing for the afternoon or ice skating or whatever the case may be. So I'm hoping I can get at least one or two other people to move this agenda item forward just to activate city staff to start looking into the feasibility and the cost of outcomes.
Thank you. Okay, so Council, we're just looking for support to move this forward to place on a future agenda. So do we have two other council members who are willing, interested in moving this forward and taking a look? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You got it. 13B, request by Councilmember House for a discussion about designating Juneteenth as an official holiday for the City of Flagstaff.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be very brief. It feels particularly serendipitous that we are discussing this on the eve of Independence Day because it is so frequently said that Juneteenth completes the promises of the Declaration of Independence and completes the circle of America's celebration of freedom. So I am graciously hoping that there will be others on Council who will support this moving forward. Juneteenth became a federal holiday just a few years ago, and it was really an opportunity for us as a nation to recognize that connection and that definition and redefinition and reconsideration of what freedom truly means for this country. And I would love to see the City of Flagstaff be part of that larger conversation. Thanks.
Council, do we have at least two others who would like to have that conversation? Yeah. Was your hand up too, Councilmember House? Okay. All right, moving down to item number 14, Public Participation. I don't see any public participation. So moving down to item number 15, Informational Items Two From and Future Agenda Item Requests. Let's start with, do you want to start?
Sure.
All right.
If I might, Mayor, if I could.
Oh, yes, please.
I sense, and there is still confusion on many faces as to why the pickleball discussion went the way it did. If you have an explanation as to why you voted to reconsider or not to reconsider, you could put that on the record here. That's not inappropriate. But we couldn't get into the meat of the discussion again, just giving you a heads-up.
Thank you, Sterling. Vice Mayor.
So yeah, I just want to take a brief moment. I do want to apologize, Mayor, Council, city leadership, and especially Mr. McCarthy. I think I got a little heated there, and it got the better of me for a moment. My, I stand by most of my comments, but that little quip at the beginning, use your own pickleball pun reference pot shot, I don't know, I apologize for that. It was inappropriate. It was not a good place to do that, and I should have, I would have been fine saying everything else I did without adding that. So I just want to say that. Maybe that's a good segue into, and looking forward to a nice, long recess. And more importantly, I believe that the city apparatus is looking forward to a break from city council. And so it cuts both ways. I know that life goes on and a lot of important things get done that we take for granted every day, even while we're out. So city hall life will persist and thrive without us doing our meetings every Tuesday. Looking forward to a break. I will be catching up on a fair amount of city business on my own time and looking forward to the Fourth of July Parade tomorrow and being on a float with all of you. Very excited that we're going to have a float, and I'm sure others will too, but I want to give credit to Councilmember Sweet for getting us off of our feet, finally, for that event. And I hope all of you have a wonderful, relaxing, and restful recess from me as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I would like for us to consider just a little, Sterling, this is for you, a little cheat sheet on Robert's Rules of Order. I think it would be helpful for all of us and a refresher. Unfortunately, I've had the experience of sitting through hours and hours of stuff like this in the sorority, and so with 6,000 women, and so you get really, really, really familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, and it can be very helpful, even though it might not seem like it is, but it was. And so I just think a little cheat sheet might be helpful, and it might, you know, just help us all. And doing a second gives you an opportunity to discuss. You don't have to vote yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a fair. This is my first one. I would like to know if there's support for the city to place a ban on income discrimination for rental agreements.
Okay, thank you.
That's a fair, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
And I did just want to make a, just a statement out there in the universe, if anybody is watching our late-night meeting about the pickleball. I'm hoping that both sides can come together. I've done some research. Indoor balls have larger holes, they're quieter, there's paddles out there that are quieter. I don't know how much pickleball balls are, or paddles, but I think it's a small investment, if they can be used outside, to be courteous to their neighbors. You know, I did the research on just from up front, the decibels, to 100 feet to 200 feet, and also conversations are averaging 600 decibels. And so that's about where 200 feet a pickleball court is. So I think that there's some modifications that the pickleballers, I'd love to see them consider, and I'm just putting it out there if they're watching, just be good neighbors. I think there's a way that it can be a win-win for everybody, and I hope that they will all come together and be neighborly.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I am too, looking forward to the parade. There's also a laser light show tomorrow night out at Fort Tud Hill, and if you're a music fan, Cracker is playing at the Orpheum Theater. So that's kind of a fun way to ring in Fourth of July. And I wanted to talk briefly about my pickleball decision. I did not take it lightly. I went out a few different times to talk with staff and to talk with the neighbors and the residents and look at the trees and look at how we can position the courts. And in the end, after all of the time that I spent on this issue, my decision remained the same, and that's basically why I voted the way I did. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Vice Mayor, my friend, Austin, I accept your apology. And why do I accept it? Because I know you're sincere. I could tell that in your eyes. So, thank you. As far as my decision on the pickleball thing, I'll admit, I'm disappointed that we couldn't even discuss it again. I did have some new thoughts, but oh, well. I have gone out there and I walked along the north side of the park, and I walked along the south side of the park, and in my opinion, and it's only one guy's opinion, the sound was outrageous. It was ridiculous. But that's only my opinion. So that's just my, ended my comments on that. I will be at the parade tomorrow. I'm looking forward to that. I've always had a good time at the parade. I used to wear a blue jeans, a white shirt, and a red hat, but since Trump took over the red hats, I won't do that anymore. Okay, I do have one serious thing. We have this rule, and I don't know if this is a fair or just a whatever. We have this rule that if you have so many people, and I forget how many it is, that you can get 15 minutes instead of three minutes. What I see is that the same people stand up for both speakers or, and then, and I don't know if I saw it tonight, but I have seen it in the past, where they'll stand up and, you know, be part of the 15-minute thing, and then they get up and speak too. So I think, I think what we need is a little bit more rigorous system where they have to fill out a card with names on it. And then when, if one of those names comes up with a card that they want to give their three minutes, it's like, no, you already had your opportunity. You signed it over to that 15-minute person. So I don't know that I need to give any more details, but I think we need something a little more rigorous because the, you know, the stand-on-your-honor system is not working. And a few people, probably not most people, but a few people are clearly abusing that right and that privilege. So I don't know if that's a fair or just something that the attorney would like to look into or his staff.
We're just all clamoring to speak to this.
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
We think we could handle this administratively.
I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sterling.
Great minds. I was going to say the same thing.
And I'll just say that the names are written on the cards, and I checked to make sure that names that were on the cards didn't come up and speak.
So you've already been working on this, so to speak?
Well.
And I appreciate that.
Trying.
Yeah, of course, you know, and there's no perfect system. But, and I don't know that was abused tonight, but I think there have been abuses in the past.
All right, so I also wanted to explain my pickleball position. There's a lot of Ps being thrown around here tonight. I had additional questions when it came up previously, and that's why I raised my hand to reconsider the issue. Normally, I wouldn't want to reconsider something that had already been decided. And I was able to get those questions answered. I'd like to thank everyone who sent us articles and videos. I read them and watched them. I too went out to the park to take a look around. And the one thing that I was hoping we would be able to have come
And the one thing that I was hoping we would be able to, to have come out is that there have been a couple of suggestions, and we heard them referenced tonight by a couple of the speakers, that there are a couple of potential design changes that hopefully could make, make the, make pickleball in the park a little bit more tenable for the surrounding neighbors. So I just wanted to explain. And my apologies to council and to the public, despite talking to staff about how this needed to go, it still ended up a very stilted and awkward conversation when it came back to council. So my apologies to you all for that. And that is all that I have, but I believe that the city manager has something.
Thank you, and thank you for a thoughtful discussion on many fronts tonight. Just a reminder of what I think has already been mentioned to this council recently, and that is that you have had your fair share of very intense topics of late, of late being defined as the last six months. And, you know, the decorum at the dais, from our observation, and we get front row seats, has always been very good. And even though conversations can become intense and debates can be robust, there's always been that decorum. And that's our observation, and I, I think is, is one that the community would likewise share. So just wanted to give you that little thought as we try to recap on the evening, looking ahead to the recess. This morning, that leadership and extended leadership, we put out the question of what lies ahead for the next several weeks. I think our extended leadership meetings, like they did last summer, will be suspended, but they will regroup well in advance of council's return. So we will be fully prepared for your agenda at the end of August. With leadership, I want to inform you that the group decided to keep meeting. They see this as an opportunity to delve into some matters that don't concern council agendas, and we have a number of things on our list, so we will stay busy with that. For those of you who want to continue the one-on-one standing meetings, that is fine. At your pleasure. I will be taking some leave on July 11th, returning on the 23rd. So not quite a two-week hiatus, but I will be out. Shannon Anderson will be acting manager and my replacement in my stead, and then we'll reverse that. I think Shannon's taking some time off. After that time, you know, we'll, we'll be fully covered in the manager's office during the entire time. And let us know about the meetings. What else? Yeah, we've, we're all looking forward to a little bit of reprieve, but also the opportunity to get into some things that have been put on, pushed aside a bit. We want to ask of you to do the same. You know, enjoy your downtime. It's been well-deserved, and you need it. We know you need it, and you, when you return, you'll be hitting the ground running at a very fast pace once again. So it's important to us that you do have some time to refresh. And also, I think the League of Cities Conference that will be awaiting you when you do return will be invaluable. A chance to network with your colleagues around the state and share thoughts. Very important. So thank you for that. And I think that's about all I wanted to cover. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'll see most of you tomorrow, and I wish you all a good break, and I hope that some of you get out of town. All right, we're adjourned.